Tipton is with us. We've got just a few more items and then we're going to get to you. That'll be our first action item. So at this time is citizen input. We do have two emails received and the citizen input email recently. One of them is from Nancy Clausen asking about homeless camps on ODOT property. So how money is being spent and what are we supposed to do to deal with the transportation, not public housing? So I want to thank you for that. This is citizen input, so it's not a discussion about that at this time, but it is definitely an issue that everybody understands and we're working on many levels are working towards, you know, managing this situation. And then also citizen input for COVID clinic from Irene Laver saying congratulations for your staff and their excellent coordination at the vaccine clinic at the fairgrounds. So we have had very positive feedback for the vaccine clinic and we'll hear about it today during our public health update, transitioning from the mass vaccine clinic to other opportunities in the community to get a vaccine. So being on Zoom, do we have anybody with the hand raised function for citizen input? And are there any phone numbers that are unrecognized? Thank you so much. Next item is consent agenda. As we've noted, item number three will be moved in partnership with item number 15 after number 15. So that's the discussion introducing that. And the reason that happened is because usually on a Monday, we're talking about things that might end up on the consent agenda. We didn't have a meeting on Monday, so we'll just talk about both of those items together.
Okay, so move the remaining consent agenda approval?
Second.
Okay, so consent agenda minus item number three. Any other discussion? Chair, none? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So at this time, action items, item number eight, reading of a proclamation of apraxia awareness day. Whitney Hale is going to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBohn, for the record. Whitney Hale, communications. We received a community request that the board consider a proclamation acknowledging childhood apraxia of speech. And so we've asked Diane Tipton, who is the executive director of early childhood, for High Desert ESD to join us today. Diane is also a speech and language pathologist, so she could likely speak a little bit about what childhood apraxia of speech is and how it impacts folks in our community. And then we do have the request for the proclamation before you this morning. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to the board if you have questions for Diane.
So this will be a little bit of education. I want to thank you very much Diane Tipton for joining us. And this is a request for a reading of a proclamation. So please give us the facts and help us understand. Looks like mute still.
Thank you. How many times will I hear that this year?
It happens.
It happens. Yes, so childhood apraxia of speech. To speak correctly, your child's brain has to learn how to make plans that tell his or her brain and speech muscles how to move your lips, your jaws, your and your tongue, which are what we call our articulators, in ways that result in accurate speech sounds or words spoken. So speech is different speech than language. Speech is actually the sounds that come out of your mouth. An articulation is another word for speech. It is not a muscle strength issue, apraxia. It is a motor coordination issue. So it's basically your child might hear the sound, the word that they need to produce. And as their motor cortex in their brain is telling their articulators, which by the way, just your tongue has eight muscles. So it's not one muscle. It's eight muscles that are coordinating just in the tongue, tells tells your motor articulators how to produce that sound. And it is not matching what they're hearing in their brain. So for example, you will, a characteristic would be to have a child imitate, say the word fish. And they might say bish. And then on a second try, they might say kish. And so that is one of our characteristics as we're evaluating students for possible apraxia of speech to differentiate from other speech disorders, which might be just a delay in speech sound production. They are, it's a coordination. You'll see some groping movements, sometimes inconsistent sound substitutions, like I just mentioned. Also, another characteristic is sometimes the stress on a word might sound different. So we put the stress on the first syllable for banana. They might say, they might keep the stress the same banana, which would sound more robotic. Or they might actually change the stress in the word and say banana. So that gives you an idea of what of what childhood apraxia of speech is. It typically is not associated with your thinking skills. It is, it is strictly kind of a motor speech disorder. We work on that as speech language pathologists to look at what are some of those rote phrases that are most meaningful for that child? And if we can work on the repetition of those phrases, it has nothing to do with the complexity of the sounds because that is not the issue. It is getting the repetition to be able to coordinate those motor articulators to speech.
Thank you so much. I mean, just a little bit of knowledge there really puts it in perspective. And I can imagine it's young childhood development. Is this, so this something you can work towards optimizing? Or yeah, I don't know what the terminology. And what kind of age group is this also?
This typically is between two and four years of old when when children are diagnosed with this because the complexity of speech and language increases. And so when you think about putting your oral articulators together just to say one word, once you're four years old, you're typically speaking in four word sentences. So again, it just increases the complexity of that motor movement. So typically between two and four, there is a wide range between mild and very severe. And with some of the mild or moderate disorders with speech therapy, you can, you can help treat that. And you can make a difference and make it better with compensation strategies for more of the severely impacted children.
Thank you so much. Any other thoughts or questions?
So how long will they need to be worked with? You know, if you're saying between two and four, is it something that, you know, when they're five, that they will be beyond a speech pathologist?
Hopefully. Actually, it can typically be a little bit longer to be able to work on that. And it completely depends on the severity of it. And like I said, there are children that have my, are mild and yes, but our goal in early intervention, early childhood special education, which is the program that works with children with all disabilities birth of five, we transition them to kindergarten. And typically, most children would still have speech therapy in kindergarten. And there, and it could be, as I'm seeing in the chat, it could be a lifelong, you know, you just have to really concentrate on how you're putting those sounds together into phrases and then, and then making it almost become automatic. Like that would be the goal. So you're looking for very functional phrases to work on. And to answer your question, it is across the board in terms of the severity.
Thank you.
Well, for me, it brings up the concept of reading, you know, just having that simple book at a young age, flipping through maybe the same simple book a few times. Also, the smart reader program, you know, have different adults read with different children. Just to get experience and acknowledge that, you know, words make sounds and you're able to make those sounds and speak. So they have early childhood development. So this is really special, being able to understand what apraxia is.
I'm just curious, how does the High Desert ESD help route kids into the therapy that they need?
Okay, so that's a great question. I should probably put in the chat before I'm done, on the referral number. Anybody can refer a child that they have concerns. An intake specialist picks up the phone, schedules a screening. We screen for all areas of development. And then we do further evaluation for the areas that that require that, that when a child doesn't pass the screening. So you might call and you might have a child with a speech delay or disorder. You don't know, you're a parent. You would refer and then you would get that screening to make sure there are no other developmental areas of concern and then get that further evaluation. Once that evaluation is scheduled and completed, the state has a criteria of, it's 1.5 standard deviations below the mean, but basically, do you qualify for special education services or do you not? If you do, we, they, we are passing that file or that that child or student over to a speech language pathologist. And at this point, we, we can't determine if it's apraxia of speech or, or maybe another speech disorder that has to do with strength or another whole area. So we divide it between motor speech disorder or kind of developmental speech disorder. The speech language pathologist determines that and we provide services until they're going to kindergarten.
Great. Yeah. And you should tell us what that number is so that we can share it with other people.
Right now.
Okay. So yeah, look it up a phone number for us at this time. Thank you. Well.
We cannot see the chat. So if you want to just say the number out loud, that might be best for us at least. Now you're on mute.
Oh, there you go.
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay. So the phone number is 541-312-1947.
Thank you so much. And there are other people following online also. So this has been a request to the Board of Commissioners. Great educational opportunity today for anyone and everyone. This is a proposed proclamation. It looks like we could read it in thirds pretty easily, three sections, if you'd like to do that today.
Oh, sure.
So Commissioner Adair, if you want to.
Want me to start with three paragraphs or something?
Yeah, the first three, yeah.
Whereas, May 14th marks Apraxia Awareness Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Deschutes County about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder in children. Whereas, childhood apraxia of speech, CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech defects in children. Whereas, active learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children. Those with apraxia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle.
Commissioner Chang?
Whereas, without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia are placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school related skills. Whereas, that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities if not resolved or improved. Whereas, most children with apraxia of speech will learn to communicate with their very own voice only if they receive early intervention, appropriate, intensive, and frequent speech therapy.
And whereas it is imperative there be a greater public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Deschutes County among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers, and elected officials. Whereas, funders such as insurance providers, schools, and policymakers are encouraged to recognize the critical need to provide adequate speech therapy and other services so that the impact of the disorder is minimized and so that thousands of affected children can grow into productive, contributing adult citizens. Whereas, our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Let it be resolved on May 14th is Apraxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Deschutes County and surrounding areas are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech. Is there a motion for approval?
I move that we approve this proclamation.
I second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we'll have this signed and we're also going to share a copy to the requesting party.
We will do.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to quickly say, if I can, that I wanted to make sure everybody understood that the whole process from intake screening to receiving services is free.
Great.
For everybody. There's not an income eligible requirement. Yep, it's, it's all free. So yeah, just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration of board signature of a funding contribution agreement with ODOT for the Bend North Corridor Cooley midterm project. Cody Smith.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer at Deschutes County Road Department. In early 2019, ODOT was preparing an application for an infra grant for the Bend North Corridor Cooley midterm project. This would be their second attempt at applying for a grant through the infra program through the Federal Highway Administration. ODOT had received some feedback in their initial grant application that that was unsuccessful, that one of the things they needed to do to improve their, their next application was to seek more local support for the project. So in February of 2019, the Board of Commissioners considered and adopted a resolution to contribute $5 million of county road funds towards that project upon the success of ODOT receiving an infra grant. When that resolution was considered, the road department staff was present and gave a presentation to the board showing, demonstrating that that $5 million could be accommodated in the, in the county road CIP. We gave a presentation of a draft tenure plan where we could fit that in. That $5 million was included in our, in our proposed budget for fiscal year 20 and then carried over into our proposed budget, into our approved budget for fiscal year 21, our current budget. Meanwhile, ODOT was successful in obtaining that, that infra grant for the project. So this morning, the board will be considering a, an agreement with ODOT that will facilitate that $5 million county contribution to the Bend North Corridor project. I'm going to now hand it over to Bob Townsend. He's going to give a presentation on the status of the project. So with that, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you for joining us, Bob. It'd be good to hear the status.
Yes, just, I'm trying to get my screen shared here. And good morning, everyone. Bob Townsend, ODOT area manager. Can you redo that? Okay. Are you able to see?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for having me, commissioners. So I just want to, I know we, everyone has some familiarity with the project, but I was just going to go back, give a little background and then give a status update and certainly answer any questions as, as they arise. As Cody mentioned, the, this is the infra grant project, the federal infra grant. We have house bill 2017 funds and I'll, I'll share the, the funding breakdown here in a little bit. But the, the project was based on, and you may have seen this drawing before. I mean, we started work on this and back in 2008, started a federal environmental impact statement review that was approved in 2013. And basically, the purpose of it was to address congestion, safety issues, and overall traffic flow in the north triangle between US 20 and US 97. And if you look at this drawing, that's been the drawing we've had for years, is, you know, depending on the time and construction cost, you know, it's 275 to $300 million worth of work. What we did is we geared our application towards what we had funding availability. So as Cody mentioned, it really comes down to, obviously, if the project's worthy, it really comes down to a funding issue because you're going to meet the other criteria. And generally, these federal grants require 60% as a minimum match to receive funds. And so really what we did is, you know, we gathered as much funding commitments as we could. And that was 60% of 135 million dollar project. And that's how we settled on that. And that's how we determined how do we get from a 275 million dollar project to 135. And so we prioritized these, these main goals, reduce congestion on US 97 and 20 during those peak hour times, specifically in the morning inbound and outbound in the afternoon. Certainly congestion leads to crashes and, and significant accidents. And so reducing congestion helps that. We prioritize truck related crashes because they're a little more prevalent at signals. And then, you know, the big one that helps with people and, and the economy is increasing travel time reliability and reducing that congestion. And then as a, as we do in most of our projects now, and looking for those multimodal opportunities, improving bicycle and pedestrian access. And so that's what we prioritize in, in our grant application. And so where we're at now, from that big drawing that had a lot of different things is we're, you know, we're prioritizing the US 20 and 97 corridors, state system first, but we do have improvements to the, to the local system. And so right now, you're looking at highway 20. You can see them all to the, to the left of the picture here. This is the Roble and US 20 intersection that currently is the signal. It's going to be replaced with a roundabout as well as Cooley and 20 as well. And so the, the proposed library space is here. We have a significant development proposed here between Fred Meyer and Costco that's in, nearing completions of an agreement. And, and so you can imagine US 20 already has significant amount of traffic. Certainly these all increase those. And so the solutions on 20 are also, we have a project and that you're very familiar with too, about the Tumalo Roundabout and the Old Ben Redmond Highway Roundabout. And so basically, under those projects, we're adding two lanes inbound to US 20, basically from, from Tumalo all the way into Roble. We'll have two lanes eastbound, if you will. Westbound, it'll have two lanes all the way to Old Ben Redmond Highway. So really improving corridor safety there, the speeds, because we're going to have raised medians, will be reduced from, you know, 55 probably down to 35. So it'll look more like a commercial corridor with an urban to commercial connection there. But, you know, we'll see a lot of travel time improvements as well as congestion management and improved safety along that corridor. So I'm going to pause on the US 20 side before I go to the more complicated US 97 side. And just any questions on, on what the proposal looks like here?
So we've seen this money time. So is this all part of the Bend North Corridor Cooley midterm project? Or what do we call this?
Yeah. So you, we're, we're going through the process of changing the name as we're adding funds to the project. And the grant term sheet, we have some of the funds now and we'll be getting more. We're going to be switching names to the US 20, US 97 north, or Bend North Corridor will be the, the project name, basically combining both corridors. We, the midterm project is one that was in our current stip, and that's what received the 50 million in house bill funds. And so as we add in the infra funds and the city and county funds, then we're going to be modifying the name to reflect the true scope.
So this, yeah, so the scope is bigger because of this, this branch of projects also. It's, it's in the same general area, obviously, but now that's going to be included.
So Bob?
Correct.
It's Commissioner Adair, and this is of course my commute in the morning. And you're saying that I'm now going to be driving 35 miles an hour when I was driving 60 and getting passed by people. You're saying that from Tumalo, it's going to be 35 all the way to Bend?
No, probably somewhere between Old Ben Redmond Highway and Cooley will be the speed shift down. And, and some of that's just inherent. You know, we're, obviously, we're going to sign it appropriately, but you know, the roundabouts are designed for 10 to 15 mile an hour speeds through the roundabout. So that's naturally going to slow people going along that corridor.
But the throughput will be more consistent. So there won't be a stop sign. It'll just kind of roll through there is what I'm envisioning.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, some of the math on the, on the delays is, you know, you look at the signal at Roble and so, you know, some, you know, there's a good chance that you're stopping there and delaying even though you're going lower speeds. If we were to put additional signals on the corridor, it would take, you know, around 16 minutes to get from Bend to Tumalo, whereas the roundabouts are, are still going to be in the eight to 11 minute range just going at a lower speed. So they are, even though they're slowing traffic down, they're a more reliable factor in determining travel time.
Consistent trip time.
Correct.
Bob, the, in your goals for the project, you mentioned bike ped improvements. Are any of those in this highway 20 corridor portion of the project? Or is that mostly on the 97 side?
No, that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up. I should have highlighted that more. So it's hard to tell in the scale of these drawings, but when we're completed, there'll be a parallel multi-use path along, along this section of highway 20 between Roble and Cooley, as well as all the way from Cooley to Old Ben Redmond Highway. So, you know, a 10, 12 foot multi-use path on, let's say, the north side of the road. On the south side of the road, it's really dependent on the, the timing. Our agreement with the library probably has them putting in the path themselves when they, when they start construction in 2023. Just it helps with, it gives them a little more space on their setbacks. And there's some, there's some value in having them do it versus us. But basically, as these properties within the urban growth boundary develop on the north side of the road as well, then they'll have a multi-use path. But yeah, certainly on the north side of the road, there'll be a multi-use path constructed when we're complete. And on the south side, for sure, from Roble down through Jamison, which Jamison will be closed, it'll be right out movements only, no left out movements. And then we'll connect path sidewalk down into Jamison. And what this is, is we'll be providing emergency services, their own access with, you know, flashing warning signs when they need to respond to emergencies that would notify people on highway 20. So a really significant improvement there even from Roble East.
That's great.
So another concept that comes up, and there's a big effort nationally and statewide for internet connectivity to, you know, any and all areas. In a discussion with the internet service provider recently, they mentioned if there was a way to get a fiber from the core of Bend into the, drop it in the middle of Tumalo, that would be the connection that would empower a budget connectivity, higher speed connectivity. So this is, you know, a new idea right now. But I mean, if we're touching these roads in the right of way, and this is for ODOT as well as the county to think about, is there a way to get, you know, at least a conduit in possibly between, you know, just kind of a point A to point B conduit between this area and Tumalo?
Yeah. So we, we certainly will be installing our own conduit for connectivity. We'll have variable message signs, potential weather stations. So we'll be doing our own. We are working with some private entities right now around corridor connectivity on highway 97 and 20. It's a very complicated issue, as you can imagine, because some of these entities don't have utility franchise rights like others. And so, but certainly that's part of the dialogue.
Well, so as I say, I could even take it as far as just starting the conversation. But as far as if we're going to have federal dollars, ARPA funds coming in, they're just maybe able to be, put a line item in there for, as I say, you know, a conduit, point A to point B. So let's think that through a little bit. You know, this is the first time I'm mentioning it, but it could be, you know, an investment that's funded by those federal dollars, a choice at the Board of Commissioners to add that possibly.
No, we're certainly interested in, I mean, there, there's been a big nexus about highway right of way and, and some of these higher speed connections and the ability to use our right of way. So we need certain, certainly be interested in those conversations and how we can make that work.
Yep. Great. And then along those lines, sorry, I'm going to go off on a little tangent. But if there's any of those other just point A to point B type connections in our county that are out there that are kind of the low hanging fruit, let's, let's look for those and make sure they're in the mix of the conversation in the next year or two. Because as I say, it could be a line item and a spreadsheet to be funded.
Certainly.
Great.
Okay. I'm going to move along to highway 97 side here. So this is, I'm going to zoom in here in a little bit. But so obviously, the highway 97 side is pretty complex. We're going to be making improvements. We're going to be making improvements um, all the way from Empire to um, to through Plaza and or, you know, north of Cooley. Uh, there with the connection, but really on a high level here before I zoom in. The existing um, US ninety seven slash third street, US ninety seven will be moved over parallel to the road, uh, to the railroad tracks. Third street will still exist there, but it will no longer be a state highway. It'll be, you know, basically served. Um, as the city of Bend string, even though ODOT is going to maintain uh, authority over it for the time being. Um, but basically what we'll, you know, what we're doing here is we're eliminating the two signals at Roval and Cooley and providing. Um, an encumbered path basically uh, on highway ninety seven. The, the plan is this is a design build project. So you know, these concepts are pretty refined, but at the same time, until we have a design builder on board, there may be changes. But US ninety seven would go up and over um, Cooley here, but I'm going to zoom in on a couple segments to veterans to explain. So just a couple of the movements, if you're traveling north on ninety seven and you want to go to Redmond. Um, instead of going the normal, you know, way and stopping at the Roval light and Cooley light, you'll be going off here. Uh, just north of Empire and headed over to the railroad tracks. If you wanted to go to the mall, you'll be exiting and this is a flyover ramp that goes up and over and will connect down uh, to Third Street. Uh, likewise, if you're up on Empire and you want to take uh, and get onto ninety seven, just like always, you'll be able to. Um, you know, take a new on-ramp and get onto highway ninety seven and merge and head towards Redmond. Um, a couple of the really nice things that, you know, we didn't highlight a lot in the infra grant application, because some of the details weren't there is. Part of the benefit of, you know, shifting US ninety seven over and making this more of a third street is we're actually going to connect third street all the way through. So right now, if you're traveling north and you want to get over to um, Third Street, you know, you have that off ramp there. Uh, but now if you're on Third Street and want to head north to the mall, this, instead of just doing the flyover to Sisters, which will still be an option, you'll be able to head north. And connect into Third Street. So basically this will just be a giant median in Third Street, but Third Street will have connectivity all the way from Cooley. Um, to the, to the south end of Bend. Uh, similar, if you're on highway ninety seven going north and you want to go to Sisters. You'll take your off ramp flyover, come under and take that same other loop ramp to head towards um, Sisters. We're going to be, because some of this property is going to be isolated, creating a new road back in here. This red line that you see here. Um, this is the proposed multi-use path that basically makes a north-south connection through the project so that people do not have to walk and bike. Um, on highway ninety seven and we've been working with the city to connect uh, to their local um, uh, connections as well. And just to highlight and I'll go back, um, or sorry. One of the other avenues that this provides that some of the earlier drawings didn't, if you're at the mall now, instead of coming up to uh, Empire. Um, and coming over and taking the ramp to get on to US ninety seven, the Roval. Um, at Roval Lane, you, you know, you go by the um, the Chick-fil-A, Chipotle, new improvements here. You'll be able to, you know, merge onto an on-ramp and get to ninety seven. And so this is uh, an important connection for the uh, the businesses up there. Uh, to have this southbound uh, connection. So just looking at the north side of it, if you're coming from Redmond and you're heading, you know, through Bend to Klamath Falls, you're just going to stay on highway ninety seven and you won't notice any differences. This is just the, the new highway ninety seven. Now, if you want to get over to the mall area or get onto Third Street. You're just going to take a, an exit back here and, and merge on to the new Third Street. If you're on Third Street and you're heading, wanting to head north uh, to Redmond, you're going to stop at the Cooley light. It will still exist for Third Street, not ninety seven. Uh, you'll go through the light and merge and again, this will be highway ninety seven is going up and over. And so you will be going on this on-ramp underneath a bridge, merging on highway ninety seven um, to travel um, north. Um, I, yeah, I think that really covers all the moments. You can see some of the path work that we're doing. Uh, basically running the path north to the end of our project limits to hopefully in the future tie into, you know, some type of Bend Redmond path um, as well. But I'm going to pause there again. Um, and any specific questions? I didn't cover all the details on ninety seven, just the major. Movements, but any questions on, on the improvements on the highway ninety seven side?
Looks like it's the, uh, the design has definitely evolved over the years and the matured. Uh, pretty exciting seeing the, the connectivity north, uh, north and south. I guess we're looking at left and right on this photo, but it's north and south.
So did we ask how long um, this project is going to take and once the start date?
Yeah, so I'll cover that in a minute here. Um, before I move on, any other questions about connectivity issues or? And, and so just as I'm talking about the concept is Commissioner Devon mentioned, we, we're really pens down on this now. That this is the design we're moving forward with, with the design builder. And then when they get on the board, onboard, you know, hopefully they may have some other ideas in saving. Money, but really the substantial movement, I mean, we know where ninety seven is going to go. We know we're grade separating Cooley. We know roundabouts are going on twenty, but they may have. In this area in particular, a better, cheaper, more efficient way to do it and most certainly listen to that, but this is generally. We're pretty much pens down right now until we have them onboard. Okay, I'm going to.
Uh, uh, observation is that there's definitely quite a bit of off-system development to happen. So I can see that, you know, that'll be nice to be able to kind of build out some of this and then make the connections to it. So there'll be phases, obviously.
Yeah. So uh, I just wanted to go over the budget. Um, certainly, you know, as I said, two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen. And as Cody mentioned, a couple of different applications to uh, for grants that our budget picture has changed a lot. And, and one of the biggest things is I think we're all familiar with property values. Our, our previous right away estimates when we were even applying for the grant were thirty five to forty million. And now they're fifty to fifty five, just based on the significant increase uh, in property values. And then, you know, coinciding with that and the pandemic, uh, material prices have went up drastically on a lot of items. Um, so uh, all that being said, our hundred and thirty million dollar projects now in this. Uh, you know, one thirty to one fifty four, one fifty five range and, and so we, you know, certainly that's not the money we had available when we applied. And we're working the system, but if you look at the available funding now, a lot of these line items were not on the original budget. So we are growing, you know, the city of Van Vaughn was not, uh, was something we never talked about. We have two developments in the area that are going to make. Significant contributions to the um, to the project. We have additional city event development uh, charges that there, we're discussing with them. Um, I highlighted that Deschutes County uh, five million cash contribution and city event originally uh, the same. But so as you can see, we still, we still have a gap. We're working to grow, grow that money. We, you know, we've even talked about potential earmarking. A little bit more money and working on some of these other, you know, funds that have been uh, available, whether the, the ARPA funds or other COVID relief funds. That maybe have potential to close that gap. Uh, but certainly wanted you guys to see where, where the money is coming from and where it's going. Uh, part of the problem is we know ninety seven has to shift and once ninety seven has to shift, then you have significant right away. You have significant connectivity issues. This is a really difficult project just to reduce scope on, to get back into budget because. You know, once you move ninety seven, you need to replace or put in three structures, right? You need to make a multi-use path for safe pedestrian access. You need to make some other improvements on Third Street with a Roval ra- ramp. And so we're still continuing to look at if there's scope, we can reduce. Um, but I just wanted to be transparent about where we uh, were funding wise. Any question on the funding table before I move on to schedule?
No question.
All right, thank you. Um, and so, whoops. So schedule wise, um. We're um, we're working on our right away acquisition. We, or we have been for the last um, year plus now. We have some of the properties we need. We've made offers on additional ones uh, that, that we need. And we're soon to make more offers on, on the remaining uh, properties. We're in negotiations with a few as well. And so, you know, we're checking them off one by, one by one. It's complicated up there because we want to give ample time for businesses to relocate as well. Because we do have a few significant business uh, building acquisitions. Um, the plan though is we're in a design build process. You, we have what we call an uh, RFQ or request for qualifications that we'll be going out for in. First of June and basically we send that out uh, to consultant and contractor groups and then we're hoping to hear back from a few parties. We've been in a lot of discussions. You can imagine the last couple of years, people are excited about this project. And so from there, um, we will shortlist and start working directly with two or three contractor design groups and getting into the details. With the hopes that we'll be signing a contract with one of them by April of twenty two. And so one, you know, we'll be doing some design and refinement all the way up until then, we meet with them individually and work through options. And it helps us in our selection process of who we end up with. Uh, but basically, once we've awarded it. Uh, to a contractor or design build group in April, you know, they're going to start uh, refining the design uh, that we have. But they're going to also be able to start right away on some of the things. Our, our premise is that we want to start on the twenty corridor um, first. And then on the ninety seven second. So if you go timeframe wise, our Tumalo and um, Old Ben Redmond roundabouts are slated to start construction early next spring. And be complete by the end of twenty two. At the same time, our hopes are as soon as they're done, the design builder is starting on the Cooley and Roval roundabouts. Late twenty two, early twenty three, when the highway twenty improvements are made. And we can use that as an alternative route and, and to relieve some of the congestion and then we'll allow the design builder to work on highway ninety seven. Um, and the goal is really to be done with construction by the end of twenty four, but uh, there's a high likelihood just with some of the. Um, issues around the pandemic and material supplies that we're probably going to go into the spring of twenty twenty five. Um, and so that's our, uh, that's our target window for completion. Any questions about schedule?
Uh, Bob, I'm, I'm curious about uh, contractor, you, you, the, what it, what do we? What it will take for a contractor to have the capacity and expertise to, to bid on this project or? You know, I guess what I'm, I'm mostly uh, curious about is do our local contractors have the capacity and expertise to? Uh, to do a, a massive project like this or do, do you think that um? Uh, chunk or all of this work will, will go to some very large uh, firm from out of town?
Yeah, so a very good question. And so it'll be a, it'll be a combination of that. We've certainly met with local contractors who are interested. But that's part of this design build group is they put together a group of people, a group of contractors and they're selling themselves. And certainly one of our criteria is local expertise, knowledge of the system, right? So that it's going to be very difficult for a, an out of state contractor with no local ties to be the successful candidate. It just doesn't work that way. And so uh, as you can imagine over the last couple of years, a lot of people have been lobbying us, you know, just having off the. Record meetings about what, what it entails, what's ODOT thinking. And certainly we have a large group of local contractors that have partnered up with larger bridge contractors. And local designers and things like that. So we feel pretty comfortable about a few of the groups that we're hearing from and, and certainly they, you know, they contain the. Um, our, you know, our local major players, you know, Night River and High Desert and, and Hap Taylor and so on. So um, you know, we're excited about the opportunity of being able to, you know, keep some of the funds local as well. Um, certainly the bridge parts are going to be complex and, and you know, those may be the key win and Hamilton types. Um, but they'll, they'll need to partner with local subcontractors and even our local um, um, paving contractors as well. So it'll be a good group that we end up with.
Great to hear. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the presentation, the budget and schedule information. It's good to see those uh, down on paper. We know this has been coming for a long time, many years in the, in the planning and the vision. Uh, Commissioner Adair did a great job advocating for the infra grant back in the day. So that was uh, exciting that we all got.
I just got to thank Elaine Chow for the sixty million in September of nineteen, which is amazing. But um, I do have one more question. Bob, how's the um, how's your basketball team doing?
There you go.
I, I would hate to miss knowing, are you still coaching?
Yes, I am. We were, we were allowed to officially start on, on Monday and then on Tuesday, we got notified of a few kids that are in quarantine for a while. So we'll, we'll see how it goes, but hopefully we can provide some opportunity for these kids who waited, you know, over a year. Plus just to get the opportunity to get back to some sense of normalcy. So we're, we're excited um, about the challenges we're going to face the next month and a half.
Well, great, because I know how much you love coaching. Um, you still have your voice. So um, yeah, hopefully those kids can get out of quarantine and. You know, they definitely deserve having their sports. So thank you for doing that. I think it's wonderful.
No, certainly. And just back to Commissioner Devon's point, I, I do want to thank um, you know, Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Devon for supporting. And Commissioner Henderson as well for being an advocate with Representative Walden. Um, and then, you know, Secretary Chow uh, um. And excited about Commissioner Chang too, being part of this project moving forward. Certainly, as Cody mentioned, we were not successful the first time. And that the additional funding from Deschutes County and the lobbying that, that was done even across the hall there with Representative Walden at one point. Uh, was very valuable in us getting this, this award.
On the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization, this has been a topic for many years. I know Commissioner Chang's involved with that now too. So uh, this is a big one.
Look forward to tracking the project at the MPO.
Yeah, I, I want to cover one more thing just real quickly. So I think Commissioner Devon and Commissioner Chang, you're scheduled to join us for our, our roundabout meeting tomorrow. With the trucking industry and certainly this project will be on there. It's really one of the last hurdles we have for the project. You know, funding will certainly be a conversation, but gaining approval tomorrow for not only the Tumalo and Old Ben Redmond roundabouts. But the Roval and Cooley ones um, are, are going to be a, you know, a very significant decision tomorrow and, and one that hopefully goes our way. And want to thank you for your support on that. And certainly I, I'm available to talk offline if you have more questions about the meeting process tomorrow or what your roles may be. But certainly want to thank you in advance for that too. That'll be um, very much appreciated.
Thank you for setting up the discussion, Bob, and we, we'll do our best.
And this is putting it in perspective, this is that hole in the air, the width, the length of the, the large uh, truck uh, transports that happen. So that's what we're talking about tomorrow is making sure that the large uh, rigs can get around and through the uh, roundabouts. There's alternate routes. Uh, and it's a good partnership to keep the economy going and commerce flowing. So that's, that's the topic tomorrow. Okay, so there is a document approving this five million dollar commitment.
I move um, consideration of board signature on document number twenty twenty one dash two six three, a funding contribution agreement with the. Oregon Department of Transportation for the Bend North Corridor Cooley midterm project.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There you go. Another item on the spreadsheet that's been funded.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so at this time, we do have a ten o'clock time certain COVID nineteen update. So we have about ten minutes, probably just enough time for a few other item updates. Tom, do you have anything specific?
Uh, Commissioners, we uh, put a draft letter in your inboxes yesterday. Uh, Lepine Community Health Clinic has requested a letter of support. For a grant application that they're submitting to the uh, Health Quality Alliance, Central Oregon Health Quality Alliance. So if you. A little inclined, you can take a look at that.
Right.
You know, I'd already sent one. I got it. Um, in fact, I think Alan was shocked.
Yeah.
Yes.
I actually said to Alan, if you send it to all three of us at once, then we have a, it's easier for us to coordinate.
Well, yeah, uh, I've, I saw the letter that you had created or I saw it in the inbox and I think somehow. But yeah, he did the same to me because he left me an email and a personal voicemail, but not indicating that he was communicating with the other Commissioners. So that's, yeah, not, not appreciated when we're all three kind of tasked with doing that.
Right. I, I, yeah, and I, I told him it was, it would just be a little bit more efficient if.
Yeah.
He sent it to us all at once and um, yeah, and he. Yeah, and he, he, he wasn't offended or anything by that. He said, oh, yeah, I can, I can work.
That'd be my feedback also. Good. So you have sent a letter from?
Yes.
The office of Commissioner Dare, okay.
Thank you very much. So I just, he said it was due by Thursday at 5:00. So today has been a really, or this has been a really busy week, so.
Well, I mean, I'm still supportive of a letter. In fact, there was one sentence I'd like to add to it, which is just acknowledging that the Health Quality Alliance is an effort of the Central Oregon Independent Practice Association. So Whitney has maybe a proposed change there. And it was really acknowledging where's this, where are these dollars coming from, you know, and thanking the Independent Practice Association, or at least mentioning them. Great. So yeah, as I say, the second sentence, request the Central Oregon Independent Practice Association for their Central Oregon Health Quality Alliance Grant Program. So that, that was my proposed change.
Always nice to recognize the grant.
That's what I figured. Let's figure out who, who's doing this grant. That's exactly what my thought process was. So Commissioner Dare, there's probably no downside in signing it as a board because it could go in the record also.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Since it's going to Central Oregon Health Council, yes.
Well, so this is, that's why I was getting clear. So this is the Central Oregon Independent Practice Association's grant project, which is a different foundation. So I don't know that it's the.
Okay, it's a different address.
Central Oregon Health Council, yeah.
Oh, yes, they're on Third Street.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I, I definitely think that, you know, getting three individual letters from the three of us is, would be good, but getting one with all three of our signatures in it, you know.
I'll talk to Alan next time I see him. He was just, yeah, very motivated.
Yeah.
So is there a motion of approval for this?
I move approval of the letter to the Central Oregon Health Quality Alliance in support of the Lapine Community Health Center's request for the $40,000.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you so much for those edits here. That's just what I was thinking.
Which of these three copies do we want to sign?
Yeah, if, if they don't say draft on them, let's go ahead and maybe do that, yeah. Go ahead, yeah, you can sign. So other updates? Okay, so I've been to a couple of meetings since we met last. I can provide some updates, or do you have anything else, Commissioner Dare?
Not the second, no.
Okay. So the Sun River-Lapine Economic Development Board meeting, there's a good group meeting there still. I remember it very much as Sun River and Lapine Economic Development efforts. There's an annual lunch scheduled for October. So this is the theme right now, is like trying to think the, out into the future and really, you know, getting, inviting people to the table. So this would be a lunch at the Sun River Resort Great Hall, in fact, so that'll be a nice event in October. Also, this morning was a Ready meeting, Redmond Economic Development. And one month from now, there's a, also, their Ready Annual Lunch, and it's scheduled for the, the Central Park at the Fairgrounds. So this is an outdoor event, you know, and if we're truly down some, you know, regulations from our COVID restrictions, they were trying to do it in, in person and hybrid, but we'll see what it looks like even just a month from now. So that's going to be a lunchtime Wednesday, though, so we might schedule around that. I'd really like to attend that one in person, kind of celebrate the fact that we're able to do that. So that would possibly, I think it's like the 16th of June, so perhaps we do a 9 to 11 or something, and then come back at 1:30 or 2:00.
It's only 14 minutes to get there.
And it'll be faster when the 97 North Corridor projects start.
Well, that, yes, it'll be a while.
But yeah, and then Ready, there's a lot of great things happening. Development, you know, the parcels on the east side that are ready to be developed are being developed, so that's interesting, you know, some capital being expended there.
Oh, I did want to say, it's, remember to get your ballot in. Next Tuesday is the 18th of May, so please remember, you do need to drop it off now. Do not mail it, find a drop off spot there all over the county, the community.
Yeah, participation in these non-presidential May elections like this sometimes is minimal, and I have a hunch it won't be minimal this year, but still, people may be hearing about it and not filling out the ballots. I absolutely advocate for, please participate.
Yeah, there's really important school district, park board, library board, and, and other, other items on the ballot this year.
By your district in Lapine, a couple of seats, and that, remember, that is the ambulance service area discussion that was happening, and that is the hot topic on the table. You know, when you think about what, what's the future, you know, there's some, some hard lines being drawn down there on the transports from the clinics, so we can't just stay here, but a new board's going to be able to set direction to that, or whatever the will of the voters are. Any other items from you, Commissioner?
I had a chance to visit with some of the directors of the Lapine Habitat for Humanity yesterday and check out the Putney Place Project, which is really exciting. And it is great to see the, the land contribution that the county made, being put to, being put to such good use there. And I also, I, sorry, that was on Monday, and yesterday, I got to attend a, a workshop that the Department of Land Conservation and Development did on climate-friendly and equitable communities rulemaking. So this is, these are rules that they're working on related to transportation, housing that will affect metropolitan areas. So it was, didn't get much of a sense exactly what those rules are going to look like yet, but it was helpful to kind of be in on the, on the early side on that, so that we, we have a sense of what's coming down the pipe.
As you saw, I attended the, very end of that, because that was the, I think it was the sled meeting, and then I just did, I ended up in the breakout group for about five minutes and then just at the very end of it. So I had signed up for it.
Yeah.
Couldn't be in two places at once, even with Zoom.
No. But you, you, if you got in at the, in the later part, you, you got the, you got to at least participate in the discussion portion, which is good. The small groups.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, let's get to our COVID-19 Public Health Update. Want to thank Nahad for joining us and Molly Wells-Darling, the Incident Commander, some great credentials for incident management at this time, and Emily Freeland. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Am I loud and clear?
Yes, you are. And we'll confirm, I think we're automatically streaming, or somebody's keeping an eye on that. There we go, okay. I have a confirmation.
And translation setup and a note to myself to share my screen?
There you go. We got the whole checklist.
I've learned my lessons. Okay, Commissioners, thank you for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadra Azadi. I'm the Director of Public Health for the Shrews County Health Services. Dr. George Conway, our Administrator for Health Services, is on a well-deserved leave. I am joined by Molly Darling and Emily Freeland. Molly is our Incident Commander, and Emily is our Operations Section Chief, that's part of the incident command response. So really appreciate both of them joining this meeting. Let me express my sincere gratitude to Jesse Turpstra, Chris Heinecke, and Morgan Emerson for their contribution to the preparations of this presentation. As always, a great thank you to our wonderful Health Services staff and our committee members, both for their amazing efforts in terms of the response, as well as maintaining and in some cases exceeding our regular services to our committee members. So let me start off by.
Pardon me, Nahad, one note. Pardon me, so at 10:30, I'll be stepping out of the meeting for a few minutes, so that's a half hour from now. There's a, the county chairs from around the state are meeting with the governor, and this, I'm sure this will be the topic, so I do apologize, I'll be stepping out, and I might be able to come in with fresh information or just a status of what the governor's thinking right now.
Understood, understood. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, then, in that case, let me rearrange some of the slides and start with the most important one, which is I'd like to start with some, sharing some good news. Last night, approximately around 7:00 PM, my daughter's front tooth came out.
Oh, my goodness. There you go. The tooth fairy.
The bad news, Commissioner, is that I'm out $20.
Oh.
So, so that's.
Expensive.
Now, the second piece of good news is that we are definitely at a point in time when supply of vaccines are more than adequate, and there are also, they are available at many access points in our communities, including pharmacies and clinics, and walkings are also being accommodated now. So please just take 30 minutes out of your really busy days, and I really want to acknowledge that everyone's super busy, some more than others, and, and I realize that taking 30 minutes or an hour is not easy. I do think it's an important decision and a great investment for your health and the health of your loved ones and your, and our community as a whole. Also, as you might be aware, FDA has authorized Pfizer's vaccine for children aged 12 and 15, which will be instrumental in immunizing adolescents by the start of next school year. And Advisory Committee for CDC is meeting later today, I believe, to review the data, and we expect that a similar decision will be made at that level. So this first, this next slide is the number of new cases by week. Our case counts have been increasing since mid-March. This week, there are 521 reported cases, which is the first week since, since mid-March, where we've seen a slight decrease in weekly numbers. It's too early to make any assumptions around what's going to happen next week and the weeks after. Nevertheless, we are celebrating a bit of a drop in reported cases, which is around 5%. Since March of last year, we've had 8820, 8,820 cases reported, and unfortunately, 74 deaths. Now, what is driving the case numbers? Since our case numbers are still remaining high, they may not have increased at this past week, but over 500 cases were reported. So what is driving these cases? As with previous week, we're really not seeing anything out of the ordinary. There is definitely a cause and effect phenomena here. It's our social behaviors combined with not wearing masks, not being vaccinated, not, not testing. We are picking up the virus in gatherings at work, during after-school activities, during travel, and then we come home, we interact with our loved ones, with our neighbors, with our friends, and we transmit the virus. We've had several outbreaks in various settings, as I mentioned in previous week, such as school setting, long-term care facilities, faith sanctuaries, and businesses. And what also we're coming across, what I'm hearing from our case investigators and contact tracers, is that people continue to mix up allergy symptoms with COVID-19, and they socialize thinking that they have allergies, where in fact, they're infected with COVID. So that is certainly something that we're hearing from our committee members and those that we are investigating and interviewing. I do want to maybe pause for a minute and see if Emily has anything that she would like to add to other observations she's having in terms of case numbers, and then we'll go to the messaging here.
Thanks, Nahad. Yeah, I mean, I think that's a very good summary of what our case investigators are seeing. We also just really want to encourage people to get tested if they are feeling sick at all, and answer the call when you get a call from case investigators, once you've been diagnosed, and follow those quarantine and isolation guidelines. We're seeing a lot of people that, you know, they're not necessarily compliant, or they don't want to talk with our case investigators and contact tracers, which makes it really difficult to put out those little fires when they start, because we don't have the opportunity to educate those entities about what's going on.
Yeah, thanks, Emily. This is, go ahead.
Yeah, pardon me, so I will acknowledge, you know, just take a moment, if you're not feeling right, get tested. So, and if it's, if it doesn't add up, get tested. So we have testing capacity. You can get tested multiple ways. I know we have a kind of a weekly testing event, that's the next slide, but take moment and get tested. We need to understand how this is propagating in the community. Some of the other questions that I would go with here also are some clarity on mask guidance, and I don't know if, if Nahad, you want to talk about that, or Emily, you know, what, what's the, you know, the rule? So we've got a culture at the county building now, we've been able to follow the whole time, is wearing a mask inside the building. I'm taking it off at my desk, but if somebody's stepping into my office, I'm putting a mask on if we're one-on-one. So what kind of guidance are, is being provided to the community? And then also, what's the CDC guideline very specifically on masks at this time? Can you help with that possibly?
Emily, you want to start?
Yeah, so I can go, you know, basically, anytime you're indoors around other people, unless you're in a closed office or a closed room with the door closed, you should have a mask on to help protect other people, regardless of whether or not you're vaccinated at this point or not. We want to see mask usage continuing as we move into, you know, even having a lot of our population vaccinated. If you're outdoors and in a place where you can socially distance and stay, you know, significant distance away from other people, you have the opportunity to perhaps remove your mask. But if you're in any crowded area, even if you're outdoors, the State of Oregon's rules still require a mask wearing in those situations.
Yeah. Now, that's brilliant, Emily. And I mean, from my simple mind, the way I see it is when I'm walking my dog in the mornings especially, I don't have a mask on and I'm vaccinated. When I'm indoors, I just assume COVID is around me, and I have my mask on, both for myself and others around me. So that's how I break it down in my head.
We also want to think about, it's difficult for a business or those kind of entities to know who's vaccinated and not. And so just for the sake of the entity that you're going into, they have to enforce mask wearing, and they don't know if you're vaccinated or not. So it's really important just for the, if we are being cognizant of the business owners and the, the struggles that they've had, they don't, you know, they aren't able to see if you're vaccinated or not, and they are required to make sure that you're wearing your mask when they're, when you're in their establishments as well.
And then one question about the quarantine, so 14-day quarantine. We just heard from a basketball coach that some of the kids are in 14-day quarantine because they were contact traced. What's, what's the words on quarantine, as in, you know, is, is there kind of a mandate or a suggestion, or can we talk about that just a touch?
Yeah, so the investigative guidelines that we follow as we do contact tracing do require a 14-day quarantine, and these are written by the Oregon Health Authority if you've had that close sustained contact with someone while they were contagious with COVID. So that's why it's really important that people do answer the call and help us figure that out. We don't want to quarantine people unnecessarily if they weren't actually exposed, but we do want to stop the ripple effect in our communities and be able to put those fires out. And part of that includes educating and, you know, this requirement for, for quarantine for 14 days after your exposure to look for symptoms and make sure that you don't inadvertently spread the disease in our community.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Sure. And with Memorial Weekend coming up in a couple of weeks, listen, it's, it's, we're not going to say, we're not going to be unrealistic. People are tired, they want to get together, they want to socialize. If you're going to do it, minimum, wear a mask, if you can get vaccinated, get vaccinated. And, and definitely, if you have any suspicions, just get tested before or after and after. And there are multiple opportunities. In fact, one coming up this Thursday and throughout this month, every Thursday, there, there are opportunities for free testing. You can just show up, no ID, no, nothing, no insurance, no allegiance to any football team. You can just show up, get tested, and you'll get your results soon. And then last week, in fact, I believe we had nearly nine, we had around a $126 test and around 9% positivity rate. So we are catching some folks during these testing events, which helps basically in, at minimum, control the transmission throughout our community with people inadvertently walking around transmitting the virus. So these small actions really make a big difference, and I would encourage our committee members to show up and get tested. And as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're hearing from our contact tracers and investigators that there is still some confusion around COVID-19 allergy symptoms. And, and here's the take-home message, frankly, and Commissioner Devon, you mentioned this earlier, you're not feeling well, you've got some symptoms, just get tested. It's so easy to get tested. Most places are. Most places are free, or you get reimbursed. So any sort of symptoms you have, any doubts you have, get tested, please. Okay?
Nahad, the downtown, the downtown testing opportunity, is that going to be in the same place, right along Wall Street there?
Correct, Commissioner. Emily, anything you want to add to that testing event? No?
No, it's, it's a pretty fast process. It's a drive-through testing event. It'll maintain in that, that Wall Street parking lot. You can get in and out, swab yourself, it's not that deep nasal swab, and it is that more accurate PCR test. So it's not, it's the most accurate test that we have.
Yeah. And I, and I've learned, and I think Commissioner there rightfully brought this up a couple of weeks ago, that even though we receive the aggregate data, that maybe after a few days, those who test, they get their test results, especially positive, much earlier, and they're contacted. So there is, we definitely are able to address the public health piece of it. It's the reporting piece that's a little bit delayed due to various reasons. Okay, so this next slide, we see the vaccination coverage by age group. And I want to acknowledge that we're, recently, there was a shift in terms of our denominator. I think our state colleagues are now moving towards the 2020 census data and using those as denominator, and we're still updating some of our numbers. We don't anticipate a significant change in the numbers or the rates. Nevertheless, I just want to acknowledge that upfront, we're doing quite well, I think, in categories above 60 years old. And we still have to acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do when it comes to our younger age groups as well. And of course, with that, as I mentioned in previous weeks, this slide covers the weekly case rate by age groups. And with vaccinating our older populations based on goals that we made as a nation and in our state in terms of reducing morbidity and mortality, we do see a shift and continuous transmission in younger populations, because obviously, majority of them are not either fully vaccinated or vaccinated. We are seeing higher rates among teenagers, young adults, and people in their 30s and 40s. And I think these rates more or less correlate with some of the reasons or drivers that we alluded to in an earlier slide.
Nahad, when you look at the chart, though, actually, 50 to 59 had as many positives as the 40 to 49. It appears that. So it actually means that it's, it's, you know, it's crossed our entire county's population.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. So in this last slide, I think I mentioned that about 60, we see a pretty good coverage, probably enough to see control of the transmission. And then going below that 59 and under, we see a drop in coverage, which coincides with exactly what you just mentioned, Commissioner. Okay, so this next slide shows our testing volume in our communities, which is slightly down last week compared to the previous weeks. The good news is that also the positivity rate has slightly decreased from the previous week as well. Not by much, but it has dropped. There are multiple places throughout our communities where testing is available, and I also want to acknowledge that the testing quality varies throughout the community as well. So that's something to keep in mind as our community members seek testing. Emily, I'm wondering if you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, not really. Just that, you know, the decrease in testing volume, we're seeing that on the contact tracing side as well. People are more hesitant to get tested, so we do want to continue to encourage people to make informed decisions about their health and, and how they're spreading things in their community by, by getting tested.
Okay. All right, so I think we've said the word testing enough times. If you have symptoms, get tested. If you don't have symptoms and you have questions around some of the choices that have been made, also get tested. So get tested. This next slide, we're looking at the St. Charles Health System hospitalization. These are the hospital admissions for the region, the tri-county region, where, and it is, let me acknowledge that it is true that our numbers, despite hospital admissions increasing, are still below what we were observing in probably December and January. However, one thing that maybe our community members are not aware of is that we, as of this morning, we have the highest number of ICU admissions that we've ever had. And that's serious. That means the disease severity seems to be outpacing what we saw earlier in the pandemic. And that's something to keep in mind. So being younger and so-called healthier doesn't exempt us from this virus, from the disease or the severity of the disease. And that's something really that is concerning for a lot of us. As of this morning, we have 40 admissions. These are, again, regional admissions. 25 of the 40 admissions are Shute County residents. We have nine in ICU, and we have six unvetted at this point. And ever hospitalized is at 470 since the beginning of the pandemic.
Nahad, I'm sorry, I, I think I missed one of those numbers. You, you, a couple minutes ago, you said we had the highest number of hospitalizations that we've had, or?
No.
No. It was the highest number of something that we've had?
In the ICU.
In the ICU. Thank you.
We had 51 in the hospital back in December.
Yeah, I can see that on this chart, so I was trying to, I was trying to match that up. Highest number in the ICU.
But you're saying the total admitted now is 476, is that correct, of Deschutes County residents?
470, Commissioner.
70, okay, great.
Yeah, ever hospitalized is 470. Highest number of, from my conversation with my St. Char, with St. Charles colleagues this morning, is the highest number of ICU admissions. And that's concerning, right? Nine admissions, speaking to possibly the variant, or the variants circulating, and the implication of that. So that's something to keep in mind.
Nahad, one thing I do mention every week is therapeutics. You know, we have politicized the therapeutics of COVID treatment. If you have certain symptoms, you need to get on certain therapeutics. And I tell people, if you get it and you have any kind of symptoms, please immediately call your doctor. You, you know, you need to do things so that you don't end up in the hospital. So, yes, it's, don't ignore it. There are, you know, there are drugs out there that you can go on that are very helpful. I mean, we've been dealing with this in America for over a year. We do have an amazing healthcare system, and I do believe that people at some point in time need to have a relationship with the doctor.
Nahad, I had one, one more question about hospitalizations. Without invading people's privacy, is there anything you can tell us about, you know, the ages of people who are being hospitalized, or, you know, anything else to better understand who's getting severe cases of COVID?
Yeah, Commissioner, I can definitely come back with more accurate data. What my understanding with conversation with Dr. Johnson of St. Charles and from his presentation from a couple of weeks ago, is that certainly we're seeing the age of the admissions, on average, decrease by seven or eight years. So we are seeing younger folks admitted, and we are seeing them in ICU as well. And the length of stay, we're seeing also that increase. Now, I don't, I'm not clear on whether these differences are statistically significant or not. I think as we're gathering more data, certainly, we're moving towards statistical significance one way or the other. But nevertheless, certainly, there is a drop in age of those admitted.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And there is no really clear answer or understanding as to exactly what's going on. There are various hypotheses. It could be the variant, it could be the viral load, for example, it could be occupational exposure, many other factors that go into this. So there's not really a clear understanding as to what this dynamic, how this dynamic can be explained. But there are certainly good hypotheses out there. And the next couple of slides are kind of linked. Beginning, you may have heard, the community members may have heard from the governor's announcement that beginning May 21st, counties will be eligible for option to move to lower risk, when 65% of county residents 16 and older receive the first, at least receive the first dose, and the county submits a plan to close any vaccine equity gaps. And more restrictions are to be lifted statewide when 70% of Oregonians 16 and older receive first dose.
So this was the news out of the governor's office yesterday, and I'm sure it'll be a discussion I'll be able to have, or may come up with county chairs here in a few minutes when I talk to the governor. But submitting the plan is going to be our effort. You know, that may be something that we're going to be involved in as commissioners, you know, what, what is the final submittal, you know, from the county, and what is expected? This is a moment in time, thinking of defining the populations, knowing that we just did a census, and what, what numbers are we using, what numbers are we aiming toward. So just to let you know, this is going to be that, that effort to understand what the state's asking for, but we want to definitely make sure that anybody and everybody is notified of the opportunity to get a vaccine, understands the severity of the situation, and aim for, you know, population herd immunity and whatever else the terminologies are currently.
Yeah.
Nahad, I wanted to ask about, about this plan. I mean, I know that, I know that the Incident Command Team and Health Services have thought a lot about how you ensure that everyone has access to the vaccine. So is it, is it going to be, is it just kind of writing down what you're already thinking and doing to, to, to put this plan together, or is it a really big project, or?
I, I think, and I'm going to give the floor to Molly. I was just going to say a couple of words and actually give her just the space to take us forward. Is that okay with you, Molly? Yeah, so I think it's yes on all accounts, right? A lot of effort has gone into closing this equity gap that we have observed in our communities. It is also a matter of putting it, and a lot of work has gone into putting it on paper as well. I think part of the challenge, and Molly might speak to this as well, is around having good data. And this is where I think I have come forth on maybe different occasions to speak to investments in database systems, where we have timely, accurate information, especially about our marginalized populations. Because we don't have, I would say that for a state as advanced and wealthy and sophisticated as ours, I'm surprised about our database and data system capacities. So that's, that's something to keep in mind, and Molly's going to speak to that. Now, before I give the floor to Molly, Commissioner, if you allow me, just one moment of editorial here, what I like about this particular slide, of course, I think it's obvious, is that we continue to be, as the Shute County trailblazers throughout the state, we are at, you know, we are amongst the two or three highest counties with, of counties with highest vaccination rates, which doesn't surprise me, given the quality of our staff and leadership in the county, both within Health Services and at the commission level, of course, as well. So that, that's definitely something I do like. What concerns me about the recent announcement is that is, is around the 65% goal. And it concerns me on two fronts. One is that I, I believe it's a very low bar, and one that we can achieve immediately, and it might send the wrong message to our community members that the job is done. That concerns me, frankly, quite a bit. What also concerns me is around equity and average. I mean, 65% is an average, right? So if, if Bill Gates walked into my office right now, our average income will be in the billions. But we know that does not speak to, obviously, the range of the income. So, so I think that's really important to consider, in that we do have populations who are 70, 80% covered, and then we have some that are at 30, 40%. And ensuring that everyone has the opportunity, and we address any systemic barriers to ensure that they receive the vaccine and take it, and make sure that the entire population in the county is way above 65%, which to me is a little bit insulting, frankly, to be set the bar so low, is something that I wanted to share with you in terms of my observation and concerns. And with that, I'll give the floor to Molly.
Thanks, Nahad. Yeah, just to elaborate on the plan, so we just received information this morning from the state on what they want in that plan. There's a series of questions that we'll go through, the team and I, today to answer. And then there's also, there'll also need to be a letter from the commissioners and from public health. So I think the plan, you know, for the most part, we've done a lot of work around equity, and we will be able to put it in that plan, what we have done, as well as what our, what our plans are for, for the future. Data is one of the issues that I think we'll run against. The, the state cannot provide data for us necessarily because we're considered a smaller, so we're having to gather that data ourselves. Luckily, we have been working on that, so we'll look at that a little bit later today as well. And like Nahad said, you know, 65% isn't that far off from where we're at. We're currently at 61.3% of our population having at least one vaccination. We currently have 49.1% of the population being fully vaccinated, and really, that fully vaccinated is what's important. In fact, fully vaccinated plus two weeks is what's important, because that's when people are more protected against the virus. So I would share Nahad's concerns, too. You know, I don't want people to see us get to 65% and then say, yay, we're done. It's really important that we continue to get vaccinated. You know, I know when we look at moving towards opening our economy back up and our businesses back up, that's, that's fabulous news when we get to do that. But vaccinations really need to continue, because we don't want to see our businesses end up having to close because they've had an outbreak and, you know, 70% of their employees are out, right? So if our, if our businesses and all of our partners can just continue to encourage people to get that vaccination, and also, you know, when Commissioner Vaughn was talking about the basketball team, I don't know what their ages are, but, you know, if you're vaccinated and you're exposed, you pretty much don't have to quarantine, right? So that's one of the good things about vaccination, is if you're vaccinated, you get exposed, you get to continue on with your life, and work, and school, and family and friend events, whereas if you're not vaccinated, currently, the state guidelines are that you have to vaccinate, or that you have to quarantine for those 14 days. So just things for our community to think about in relation to vaccinations. Move ahead.
I'm going to step away at this time. This is the Chairs of the County Commissions meeting with the Governor's Office, and I will be back in 20 minutes or maybe a half hour. So I do apologize, but maybe I'll have more information.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I just wanted to say that, based on previous discussions, I also was wondering whether 65 or 70% is, is, is high enough, because, you know, we've been talking about herd immunity being achieved at 75 or 80% for, for so long. But I do think that this new framework for, for talking about the risk of COVID in, in our community, hopefully creates the right incentives for people to get vaccinated, you know, to, just to know that your community can start to, you know, function more normally if we can hit these thresholds, I, I hope is going to motivate those, you know, remaining thousands of people who haven't gotten vaccinated yet to come in. And hopefully, we'll just overshoot. Setting, setting that incentive will get tons and tons of people to come in, and, and we'll overshoot, and maybe we can get to the 75 or 80% that we, we truly need to have full confidence that we've got herd immunity in our, in our community.
Molly?
As Commissioner there, I have a question. If we've had almost 9,000 positive cases of COVID, do we have the details to know, have those 9,000 all been vaccinated too? Because I believe you do achieve some herd immunity. If you've had COVID, you've recovered, you're on your way to health, how many of those have been, do you, do you know by any chance?
Well, I, so if your question is, how many of the individuals who have been positive have been fully vaccinated? have been fully vaccinated, we know that only about 1% have breakthrough positive to COVID after they've been vaccinated, but...
No, that's not the question.
No, I don't think that's what Commissioner is asking. Commissioner, so you're, you're wondering if the 9,000 would obviously add up with those vaccinated in order to increase our population immunity, is that right?
Right. I know people that had COVID, that were tested positive, that immediately got their vaccination. I mean, I know a few people like that, but I'm just wondering, of the other 8,700, you know, have, have a lot of those been vaccinated too? Because it should help.
Yeah. So the initial recommendations were that even though they weren't necessarily discouraged, but those who were positive could wait three months before they would get vaccinated. So it is possible that a large number of those folks have not vaccinated themselves yet. So that's certainly, but I don't think, Commissioner, we have good data on, on that overlap. There is definitely an overlap of those who were positive and got vaccinated, but we don't know what that overlap is exactly. And, and to me, I see that as bonus in terms of our population immunity.
And Nahad, I guess kind of related questions, a related question is, someone who's had, someone who has had a case of COVID, what do we know about how many, how much antibodies they have, you know, and how, yeah, how, how immunized they are against another case of COVID?
So the latest information that I have at my disposal, I think it came out of CDC, their weekly publication, was that we're confident up to six months at least that they have neutralizing or sufficient titers of antibodies to protect them. We are, every day that passes, every month that passes, we're adding to that knowledge and understanding better, and I suppose fairly soon we'll have another update of that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Molly, go ahead.
No, no problem. Okay, so for vaccinations, now, we all know that we're moving away from our mass vaccination clinic. We're still doing second doses out there, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but if people are looking for first dose of vaccine, these are all the different places that they can go to to get those vaccines. The great thing is that they can continue to go to our regular website, thecentralorgancovidvaccine.com, and links are in that website for all of these different entities. So, you know, huge thanks to St. Charles and Mosaic and High Lakes and Summit, who have been the major clinics who have decided to assist with vaccinations. Some of them are taking only their own clients, but for certain, St. Charles and Mosaic will take patients that are not theirs as well. So if you don't have a primary care doctor, you can go to Mosaic or St. Charles to receive your vaccination. And then we also have some urgent cares that are on board, the different counties, there's links to the pharmacies and vaccine.gov. So pretty much, if someone wants a vaccine right now, they can go in and make an appointment, probably that same day to receive vaccine.
Molly, I just had a question this morning from Sisters. They're wondering if you're going to do another pop-up clinic there?
Probably at some point we'll do a pop-up clinic. Right now, we, you know, are looking at where our vulnerable populations are and equity in terms of getting vaccines out, but the good news is that, you know, we have, I think St. Charles has a clinic out there, do they, they have a clinic out there?
They do.
And they'll be providing vaccines. Okay? So just a reminder about the second dose clinics, if you do decide that you want to walk in at the fairgrounds over the next couple of weeks, that is totally fine. Near the end of this presentation, I'll show you what those times and dates are. You can also find those times and dates on our website, thecentralorgancovidvaccine.com. If you do come out to the mass vaccination clinic and you are walking in for your second dose, please remember to bring your vaccine card or some sort of proof that you've, you've had your first dose. If you've had your first dose at the fairgrounds, we're able to look that up for you. And remember that your second dose needs to be 21 days out from Pfizer, your first dose of Pfizer, or 28 days out from your first dose of Moderna. Go ahead, Nahad. So in, in relation to pop-up clinics, Commissioner Adair was asking for that. So we are focusing our pop-up clinics for the future in a couple of different areas. One, for our individuals who may be Latinx, or homeless, or people who are underserved in our community, and then also in relation with our frontline businesses, especially because a lot of the employees from these frontline businesses may have barriers to getting to vaccine, so we'll be collaborating with those frontline businesses to provide clinics for them. So the important part of this is, we're here to help. If your employees can't get away and can't get to the pharmacies or to another clinic, we're willing to collaborate with you. We want, you know, to help you encourage your employees to become vaccinated. One thing that businesses are doing throughout the state is they're, they're offering incentives for their employees to get vaccinated, so sometimes that looks like being able to get vaccinated while they're working. Some people are doing some financial incentives, so there's lots of different ideas around the state, and then we're just hoping that our businesses can help us spread this word. So if we have businesses, frontline businesses out there that feel that like it would be helpful for their staff, for us to collaborate with them and provide a pop-up clinic at their business, they can email us at ourhealthservices@thechutes.org, and then we will get them on the calendar. So we'll have a couple of those pop-ups a week. We'll also have a stationary vaccination clinic, likely downtown, for people to walk into one time a week as well, moving in the future after the mass vaccination clinic is closed. Go ahead, Nahad. Nahad, thanks. So this is our schedule, so you can also find this on the website that I've quoted earlier. You just go into that website like you would have any other time for signing up for your dose, click on that second dose button, and the hours will come up for our second dose clinics, and, and also the hours for when you can walk in, and the type of vaccine that we're providing. So please just do pay attention to that type, because on that particular day, that's the type of vaccine we have, and, and we can't give Moderna to someone who's had Pfizer, or Pfizer to someone who's had Moderna. And then as usual, if you have questions, you can email us at our email there under frequently asked questions, or under our email assistance, you'll receive an email back with frequently asked questions on it. If that doesn't answer your question, we will also be in contact. And then we continue to have our COVID vaccine hotline listed there, 699-5109. If you have questions, or if you want to schedule your second dose, you're able to call them as well for the mass vaccination clinic.
And Molly, I'm just wondering, Commissioner Chang, I think that's your photo here, is, I'm just wondering, is that your first dose or second dose?
That was my first dose shot, and I just got my second dose on Friday.
Great, and how do you feel?
Fine, yeah. The, the second, the second shot was, it may have been the skill of the, the person who was administering it, but the second, second shot, I didn't even, I barely even felt the needle.
Okay. Thank you, Molly. Emily, did you want to, do you have any last words? Any, I mean, you're the one with boots on the ground, very close to our community members, to our businesses, anything you'd like to add?
I mean, I would just echo what you guys have already said, that, you know, it is really important that we get this herd immunity through vaccination. What those goals are and what we're seeing on the ground aren't necessarily, you know, aligning directly, so it's really important that we think about the functional herd immunity of the groups, you know, where we are seeing this. And if you have a demographic where the vaccination rates are low, for whatever reason, whether it's a certain town, or a certain church, or a certain workplace, that COVID can still spread in those, you know, if the spark gets in there, so.
I wanted to ask a question about our efforts to help support people doing pop-up clinics. I think it's a great idea to, you know, to go where the vulnerable populations are and some of our, our populations we're concerned about. Are we, as, as we're thinking about that, are we looking at where people live, or are we trying to kind of get to people where they work? And I guess you did say, when, when we were talking about frontline workers, that we're trying to get to people where they work, but, yeah, I guess, just to, how are we thinking about where to reach people when we're, when we're talking about pop-up clinics?
Right, that, that's a great question. Thank you for that question. So pretty much all of the above in what you said. So for instance, for our homeless population, we are collaborating with Mosaic, we're doing a lot of outreach in the camps, we're also doing, we are doing outreach into congregate sites, so some of the family kitchens, or, or other areas where homeless individuals might come to receive services, we are doing pop-up clinics in those areas. We're also doing a lot of outreach into the camps and at those congregate sites from trusted individuals to help talk with them about the vaccine, and just educate them in terms of vaccine confidence. In terms of our, some of our populations, like for our Latino population, for example, we have a list of different areas that are areas that they are comfortable, it might be certain restaurants, it might be churches, that we will provide pop-up clinics at. So we're currently assessing those areas and working with our Latino Community Association on where those can happen, and Mosaic has also been providing those services. In addition, for that population, Mosaic has clinics that a lot of the Latino population will come to, and then VIM, we know, provides services for a lot of our Latino population, and so we have been collaborating with them to do pop-up clinics at VIM. And then another one of our populations that we know is vulnerable and has had a difficulty getting vaccines are our homebound individuals. So we are, we have a team, that's a mobile team, that essentially is going to those homes, so once we've identified those individuals by working with mostly their service providers, then we are going and vaccinating those individuals in their homes. So that's just...
Molly, if I may add, last week's presentation by Sarah Hudson, we have another arm of this work, which is focusing on vaccine confidence, and that group and that coalition, which is managed by Sarah, that group is constantly doing surveys, whether statistically valid survey or convenient sampling, to, or qualitative, for example, analysis and focus groups with various committee members, to understand better what the barriers are and what can be done to address some of the convenience issues. So that information, so another, for, for example, one recent effort, as people come through our fairgrounds, mass vax clinic, they're given an exit survey where they're filling out some information about convenience and confidence and compliance and what have you. And that information is really informative for us in decision-making, and adjusting, and learning, and being able to meet, meet the needs of our committee members. So there are parallel efforts going on here to help us be as evidence-based as possible.
And then I just think also, those, those frontline workers who, maybe they want to receive a vaccine, but they just don't have the time or, you know, drive or whatnot to go somewhere to get it, we know that that's part of our population, and so if we can make it as easy as possible and go to them at their business, we're happy to do that. So that's just another arm of how we're trying to, you know, make it easy for our community to get a vaccine if they want a vaccine.
Yeah, brilliant.
One other question I have is, we, we do hear from around the country concerns about people missing their second dose appointments, and, and, you know, kind of, they get a first shot and then their interest sort of trails off. Are we, are we seeing that here in our community, or?
What? Should I start, Molly, or you want to start? Here, go ahead. The, what we are seeing from our data that are shared with us from our St. Charles colleagues, and it might be just the fairgrounds, I have to confirm that, is numbers range between 2% to 3%, where there is some sort of a delay. Now, some of those folks do come back and get vaccinated, maybe at a later day, for whatever reason, but 2% to 3%, I think is, is reasonable. It's within sort of normal variance to, because to have 100% timely second dose is probably not realistic, since there's normal variance. So I think 2% to 3%, as long as we can keep it around that range, it's really important. It's really good. Now, having said that, and I appreciate you raised this question, what the trials have shown for Moderna, for Pfizer, is that the second dose is really, really critical. We don't have trials or data that suggest otherwise. We do know there's partial immunity, but we don't know for how long, and we don't know if it would even protect us against the variants. The recent data show that, I think after one dose, there's around the 60% to 65% protection, second dose is above 90%. So it's really, really important for us to get the full protection from both doses.
Great, thank you.
Nahad, what is the length of immunity then, after you have gotten your two vaccinations?
I think the latest information we have, Commissioner, we're confident up to six months, but, but I think as more time passes, we're going to add to that knowledge and have more real-life experience and knowledge around it. I, I do, from everything I'm reading and understanding, I think we should be prepared, and this is not a bad thing, this is just, you know, part of our life, I mean, it's just like wearing seatbelts, or, or it's like the flu vaccine. We should be prepared as a community for booster doses, whether it's this year or following year, that timetable still needs to be determined through, through trials and scientific methods. Nevertheless, it does look like this is one of those viruses where we would have to keep boosting our immunity, especially to different variants, and possibly to different strains in the future. So with that, Commissioners, I don't know if you have any more questions or not, I do want to just mention the following, and this is a message I communicate with my public health team and staff, is that comparing ourselves to others either brings disappointment or mediocrity. So what I'm hoping is that, as the Shute County, we're not comparing ourselves to other counties. Instead, we continue to be the best version of ourselves every day. And for me, I hope that means, at least in this particular context, it translates into increasing the vaccination rate, especially given that not everyone is eligible or could even get the vaccine. So we're doing it to protect those who are not eligible, who cannot get the vaccines for medical reasons. So I do hope that we continue to be trailblazers, and we continue to be the best version of ourselves without necessarily comparing ourselves to other counties who might have lower rates or whatever.
Thank you for all of your work to help get our community vaccinated, so that we can get back to all of those things that are so important to us, our work, our, our fun, our connections with other people. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioners, and look forward to Commissioner DeBone's update on what he finds out, we're equally curious about his findings. Thank you, Commissioner Adair.
Thank you so much, Nahad. Thank you, Molly.
Thanks, Nahad. Thanks, Molly.
Bye-bye.
Emily.
Ciao.
Well, I guess we can move, move now to item 11 on our agenda, a public hearing on the draft Community Development Department FY21/22 work plan and 2020 accomplishments. I, I'm not sure procedurally what, what we need to say or do to initiate a hearing, so I would love some, some guidance on that.
Sure, I, I don't know if you have a script for this, that we typically provide a script, but...
It actually says it's to start at 11:00 a.m.
Right, and if this was quasi-judicial, I would be concerned about that, but it's not a quasi-judicial...
I'll be back in a minute.
...land use hearing, so if you could start it early, if that's the wish of the Board, or you could wait till 11:00.
Vice Chair?
If we think...
We, we did notice that for 11 o'clock, just for a time certain, says people want to participate, we often don't provide the script for the work plan, because it's just, it's, it's just a minute's approval, in any event, without, we, we still utilize a lot of the same language, that testimony, and we maintain the record, but it's, it's a bit of, more of an informal process than a quasi-judicial or other...
In this instance, you'll simply open the hearing and call for a staff report and then any testimony.
Okay. Well, I, I do think since... Well, I do think since the meeting was publicly noticed for 11:00, we should stick to that. So, for anyone who's watching, we're going to take an eight or nine-minute pause right now and come back at 11:00 and start our public hearing on the Community Development Department work plan.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
Okay, we are returning for our time-certain item, number 11, on our agenda at 11:00 a.m. This will be a public hearing on the draft Community Development Department FY 21-22 work plan and 2020 accomplishments. We're going to open the public hearing, and then, by calling on our Community Development Department Director, Nick Lelec, to provide some initial remarks and then open up for public comment.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Chang. And Peter Gatauski, our Planning Manager, has joined me. He is attending virtually, and he will share his screen. We have a brief presentation to provide, to provide an overview of the draft work plan, and then, as exactly as you mentioned, we will open it up for public comments. So, thank you, Peter, for providing it. There's our opening slide. Of course, it really captures two of our experiences this past year, all meetings being on Zoom and unfortunately wildfires. So, next slide, please. So, I will provide a high-level overview. If the Board has any questions at that point, we're certainly happy to answer your questions. And while Peter is available now, we also have our other division managers on standby, our building official, Randy Scheid, Coordinated Services Manager, Angie Havner, Environmental Soil Supervisor, Todd Cleveland. They're all available as well to answer any questions that might come up that you may have. Then we'll open the public hearing, and then the Board, at that point, will discuss today if you wish to keep the oral or written records open or you wish to close those, and then set a time to deliberate. We use the formal terms, even though it's a more informal process, whether you wish to deliberate and adopt the work plan today or at a subsequent meeting. I just put at the bottom of the page the link to our Community Development Department website. The draft document is available there. The draft annual report and work plan is available there in a PDF format. It's also in the meeting agenda for today. Next slide, please, Peter. So, we create the work plan, for background, for everybody's benefit, we draft the work plan generally in the early part of each calendar year, January, February, and March, based on the Board of County Commissioners' goals and objectives, the Board's priorities, any changes in state law that we need to make sure that we address in the coming year or a couple of years, grants and funding sources that may pay for services or special projects, public comments, always an incredibly important aspect of our work plan every year. And this year, we have, we've received more public comments on the draft work plan than I think we've ever received. It's really been outstanding. The Planning Commission also had robust public comments at their hearing, and I will just state that we provided the public comments that we had received up through last week in the Board's packet for today. I have handed out additional comments that we've received since that time from just moments ago, the Central Oregon Association of Realtors. Jack Goddard had provided comments, and a couple of days ago, from Visit Central Oregon, from Julia Thieson. So, we provided those comments to the Board, so you have those this morning. So, public comments, very important, and we hope that there's public comments this morning. Again, I expect that there will be at least a couple. And then the final point, our carryover projects. Often, we have more projects and services in our work plan than we're able to complete in any one calendar year, and then other things come up, and so we always carry those projects over to the next year, and of course, particularly those that are already in process, and I will summarize those in just a moment. In March, then, we conducted, the Planning Commission, a work session on what is in the draft plan, as well as a public hearing, and the Planning Commission then provided their recommendation after really significant consideration and thought in early April. Last week, on May 3rd, the Board of Commissioners held a work session on the draft annual report and work plan. We really focused at that point on the annual report, some of the highlights of that, and then some of the projects in the proposed work plan for the next fiscal year. Today, May 12th, is the time for our public hearing, and then after this public hearing, the Board will decide what the next steps are for deliberations or keeping the record open. Next slide, please. So, in the draft work plan, I'm going to separate this into two. One is going to be just higher-level projects that are in the work plan that may apply to any and all divisions, and then I'll spend a couple of slides on long-range, on the long-range work plan, which often is what receives a lot of the public comments, particularly with the Planning Commission, of course. So, just some of the projects that we, that are carrying over, that we're currently working on and will continue to work on, are continuing to participate in or lead disaster preparedness planning efforts. Just so incredibly important to keep our residents safe, and there are so many different initiatives that we highlight here. We're participating in the natural hazards mitigation plan update. We continue to keep up-to-date on the continuity of operations plan. We look forward to the Sheriff's Office and the emergency management team restarting the pre-disaster preparedness plan that had begun pre-COVID, and we know that that will be coming back. And then, we're watching the legislature now, and we look forward to having more conversations with the Board beginning next month and with the community beyond that regarding building and defensible space code standards. Addressing the housing shortage, we need to address this on absolutely all fronts. Summarize it there. Sustaining high customer service levels while transitioning to post-pandemic operations. I do include a piece here that I snapped, a photo from the bulletin this morning, which is from the Oregonian, on remote testimony could be here to stay at the Oregon Capitol, and that's something for our county to consider as well with the public hearings that we continue to hold and engage the public, as this has really been one of the beneficial outcomes of really reaching our residents where they're at, where it's more convenient to them in all of our processes. Retaining and recruiting staff to meet service demands and reduce staff turnover costs. As we continue to see housing prices increase across our region, one of the best things we can do to keep our costs under control is to retain our staff, and that is going to continue to be a challenge, of course. And then continuing to improve our online services. We have really invested a lot of resources into this over the years. This, of course, was very, very important this past year, as it was one of the primary ways that we engaged our residents, our visitors, our businesses, and we'll, and there's always, the world continues to change, and we need to change with it to continue to improve our online services. Next slide, please. As the Board is aware, we're in the process of working on the Code Compliance Procedures Manual Update now. That is a project that will likely continue into the early next fiscal year, but not too far into it, and considering whether we administer, we being the Community Development Department, administer the county's noxious weed program. We're coordinating with the county forester and that office that currently is in charge of that. Couple of great photos we have on the right side here from a recent cleanup that, on a property that our code enforcement, our code compliance team participated on, participated in, which was really terrific. Our building division has had this on the work plan for a couple of years, and we're continuing it into next year, is to investigate the use of drones and other technologies to conduct building inspections, as well as considering the use of electric vehicles to conduct building inspections around the county. So, some great ideas from Randy Scheid and Chris Gracie, our Assistant Building Official, on ways to continue to improve our services there, and I know they're coordinating, for example, with the city of Bend who uses drones, so just some ideas to consider going forward in researching before making any decisions. Continuing to train our new permit technicians, we've had a lot of turnover in our Coordinated Services Division, so, and that requires a lot of training. We're investing a lot of resources there. Reopening our satellite offices, which are located in the cities of Sisters and Lepine, and completing scanning building plans to property records. We have quite a backlog of these, and they're so beneficial to our customers, our residents, people interested in properties to have immediate access to those records. Coordinating with the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, for a South County groundwater sampling event, and then establishing a regular 10-year program to monitor changes. Our Environmental Soils Division is really leading this effort, and we look forward to having more discussions this summer on where we're going with these efforts. Reviewing, updating, and promoting financial assistance programs to protect the high-quality groundwater in Southern Deshute County as we receive additional revenues from the sales of county properties and some of the revenues that we are generating from current pollution-reduction credit payments, kind of as that program is winding down, we're receiving more money that we can then invest in protecting South County groundwater. And then, providing support for Terrebonne wastewater system improvements. We haven't identified those yet. We'll be working closely with Chris Doty and his team at the Road Department, who's overseeing that, as well as residents, but we just want to make sure that we have resources allocated to assist in that effort as it comes online. Next slide, with the long-range planning work plan, this is the part of the work plan that often generates a lot of interest by the community each year, which is really, really terrific. The first is completing a lot of carryover projects. Most of these are in process right now, addressing wildfire hazard mitigation codes and wildlife habitat inventories. In terms of specifically addressing the codes, that will be a conversation that we'll begin to have with the Board of Commissioners next month and later in the summer, as we have a better understanding of what the legislature is considering, what they ultimately adopt, and the Governor, I would assume, signs. Evaluating hemp regulations in rural residential zones, that's a project that we expect to complete next month, but there could be subsequent steps that would carry over into the next fiscal year. In fact, the Planning Commission tomorrow night will begin, will continue their conversation of options to regulate hemp. Exploring agritourism and on-farm-related regulations and costs, we've had some of the best input this year that we've had in many years from really organized local, smaller farmers asking for some help, and let's take a hard look at the regulations and the permitting costs, to really, to do what we can to support their operations. We're evaluating natural resources stewardship position. This is a project that community members raised last year. We're in the process of creating a white paper on that now that we'll provide to the Board of Commissioners next month. We're coordinating with county administration, our county forester, and we're looking at examples from nearby counties as well as across the country. And then also reviewing campgrounds, manufactured home, and RV parks for new opportunities for any type of housing, perhaps it's just shelters, it's transitional housing, it's temporary housing, what are the options that we have now and what are the opportunities for the future, or where are the roadblocks in the future that we may then need to work with the state to potentially address. We're also, another carryover project that are the, completing the Transportation Growth Management, the TGM, these are state-funded projects. We're still working with the state to complete the contracts to be able, so we can actually then begin the Tumalo Community Plan Update. That's going to be so important, as we know, with the highway improvements and other improvements in Tumalo that are forthcoming, to really engage the community on updating their community plan, as well as the Sisters Rural Trails Plan. We also have a lot of, the work plan also includes a lot of ongoing operational duties. We, for example, coordinate with the population forecast, we participate on legislative committees. There's a lot of ongoing operational duties and regional coordination that, I'm just providing a high-level summary here.
Nick, one statement back on the last slide. So, just the concept of review campgrounds, manufactured home, RV parks for new opportunities. Last night, we had a really good roundtable about homeless and, you know, just rural, people living out in the rural and public lands and everything, and the terminology was managed camping, you know, so that was just a word that I picked up last night. I kind of circled it as I heard it and thought about it, because that's kind of what people are trying to do, you know, on the side of the road sometimes, is just managed camping. So, just one of those terminology things where it sounds like it's something that, you know, may be a way to proceed, just a visionary-type statement, finding that, you know, hopefully temporary transitional opportunity, but maybe more long-term for some people. So, I just wanted to use that term.
The one other term that is continuing to come up recently is safe and legal parking.
Which, yeah, fits right into that, too.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, just terminology. Yep.
Thank you, Commissioners, that's really helpful. Thank you very much. The next slide, then, please, Peter. Oh, you have it up, thank you. The Planning Commission recommendations, the Planning Commission spends a lot of time reviewing the draft work plan, considering public input, and then they provide recommendations. These were five of their priorities. There are others in the staff report. Initiating the Comprehensive Plan 2040 update is a high priority. They're very interested in broadband infrastructure and affordable connectivity. We've had some conversations about that, and I've even shared with them that our IT Director, Information Technology Director, Joe Sidonis, had recently, has provided a great update to the Board of Commissioners on this topic, and they would like to learn more about broadband connectivity, as their, our community involvement, ARM for the county, the Planning Commission is, they hear, they understand how important this is for people to be actively engaged in their community, to conduct business, to get today, to stay connected with each other, as we just know, it's so important, so functioning in all aspects of life.
And another bit on that, so, one of the conversations I had recently was with an internet service provider, and they pointed out that, you know, we have these fiber-optic lines going continental now, you know, between continents and north and south through the highway system and all that, but we probably just need to look for, one of the actions could be looking for those, you know, five to 10 to maybe 20-mile connections from a known high-speed connectivity point to the next one out, and Tumalo was mentioned specifically. If you could trench between Tumalo, Bend and Tumalo along the highway, just one little piece of conduit to put fiber in there. So, that is a real action item, though, is finding, finding those five or 10-mile or 20-mile routes to where you can just pop the high-speed connection up to someplace, because then the industry can take it from there and get the customer base. So, again, just terminology and vision.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's exactly what the Planning Commission is interested in learning more about. The third bullet point, implementing the rural ADU bill, which if it's, at that point, it would be a law.
Hopefully, it'll be law.
If it passes.
You can only hope. It won't be because we didn't try.
Well, and I think what we heard at the hearing yesterday, Senator Dembrow mentioned, you know, wildfire, whatever, implementation of some sort is going to be a dependency on that. I think that's what I heard yesterday. So, even if there's ADU, there's going to be another intersection point right after that for statewide wildfire management plans, or whatever it's going to be.
The other piece to this is the Planning Commission is interested in addressing short-term rental, potential regulations to address competing needs for housing. I have shared with them that it's already a provision in the bill, if the bill becomes law, it would preclude the rural ADUs from being used as short-term rentals, and they want to make sure that that is the case, and they would like to, for the county, to consider addressing it potentially elsewhere, so as a potential topic to include. And they've just, they've raised this for a couple of years, the Planning Commission has. Updating the Dark Skies ordinance on the right, and then options to streamline and approve permitting processes for rural residential areas in resource zones. The Planning Commission also has, the article on the right also at the bottom is from today's bulletin, single-family home prices climbing again. The Planning Commission just, they really prioritize addressing the housing, the affordable housing, the workforce housing, all the housing-related issues in the county as well. Very, very important to the Planning Commission. Next slide, please, Peter. So, that really summarizes, at a very high level, the draft work plan. There's a lot more information in the work plan, there's more information in the staff memorandum. I aim to keep it as brief as we can, given that there's so much information, and there's a lot we're working on. The instructions on the screen explain how the Zoom hearing works. If people are participating, most probably know how to utilize this now. If you would like to speak, you'll be elevated to being a panelist, and you'll be able to participate at that point. Staff, as we've already seen, the staff presents the work plan, answers questions, the Chair accepts public testimony in the following order, and we don't have anybody in person. And since there's no sign-in sheet, please provide your name and mailing address for-- for, um, for our records at, at the county. And then it just continues on to the next, next slide, um, how people will be elevated, uh, from attendee to panelist. Um, please just remember to unmute yourself before you start, start speaking. Um, and then once a person has, has completed their, their testimony, their comments, they will then be, don't like to use the word demoted, but it's demoted to, to being an attendee, and then the next person will then be elevated to provide their comments. Uh, and then the chair will, and ask for the last four digits of any phone numbers of anybody that else wishes to, to, um, to participate. So I hope these instructions are helpful. Um, before we, we move into that, Commissioners, I just ask if you have any questions for me or Peter or our team, um, before, uh, the public, before the public comment period.
Uh, just a comment, uh, you know, we've gone through the, the structure of the community development department, the pricing, uh, you know, the permit fees, pricing scenarios and, over the years, uh, and, uh, you know, we've been growing the organization now after a recession. So it really does feel like we're in a good spot, you know, kind of blossoming into what's happening here in central Oregon. Uh, you know, a few more personnel I know is going to be, it talked about at the budget committee meeting also. And then I do advocate for community involvement. I see we have a, a note from Mr. Goddard really saying that, uh, reads the annual report thoroughly in the past years. I mean, it's exciting to know there's people out there really paying attention, uh, giving us feedback and thinking about the big picture, because it really is, you know, land uses is the big play for, for a lot of people. They're home. So Commissioner, thank you very much for starting this process. I did step away for a little while.
Yeah, I'm ready to hand off to you to, to start accepting public testimony.
Okay, so at this time, we'll call it a open public hearing on the community development work plan for fiscal year 2020, or 21 and 22. And at this time, uh, following the procedures outlined, is there anybody with the raised hand feature?
Bill Kowalik.
Mister, as soon as I see the name, there we go, Mr. Kowalik, thank you for joining us. And, uh, at this time, this is basically a three-minute testimony generally-type situation, uh, but we're not going to be running real hard on that. So thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So my name is, excuse me, Bill Kowalik, and I'm the, uh, I live in Ben, and I'm the chairperson of the Oregon chapter of the International Dark Sky Association. So, uh, our organization is all about, uh, safe lighting at night, and we work to educate about, you know, problems of, uh, poor lighting and unsafe lighting such as glare, overlighting, uh, all-night lighting, or light spill onto neighboring properties. And, uh, all of those issues of poor lighting will contribute to waste of energy and money and actually harm, uh, the environment, uh, not only the human environment, but the, the wider ecosystem as well. Uh, so we actually have pretty strong support in the county, uh, for what I'm speaking about, which is the idea of incorporating the, uh, an update to the lighting ordinance in the work plan for next fiscal year. So that, you know, the existing, uh, county lighting ordinance, which dates from 1994, was actually quite, uh, forward-looking at its time. Uh, and then an update that you folks implemented, uh, back in, uh, 2016, uh, added greenhouse lighting into a description of outdoor lighting fixtures, which was a good step. So that's all very good. The thing is, uh, there have been, uh, significant technology changes since 1994, uh, that suggest the need for updating the lighting ordinance of the county. In particular, LED lights, uh, are now widely used because they require far less energy to use. Uh, but many of those LED lights put out a lot of visible blue light, which is particularly hazardous to, uh, the environment and to disruption of the circadian rhythm of people and, and animals, actually. So, uh, lighting, uh, because of these lighting technology changes, there have been, you know, uh, various, uh, directions for improving the, uh, existing ordinances, not only in, uh, the state of Oregon, but the country and around the world. In particular, uh, involving a discussion of color temperature of the light in the sense that blue light is particularly bad at night because we evolved under absence of blue light, you know, throughout history. And, you know, the brightness and the duration of lighting at night, which is not covered at all in the existing ordinance. And, you know, the, this topic is, I think, particularly relevant to county goals of promoting health, safety, you know, livability and quality of life here in central Oregon, to say nothing about energy savings. And, uh, I guess one last comment. You might have seen the, uh, recent announcement of Primeville Reservoir State Park having achieved dark sky park certification. So we're quite proud of that, and it's a indication of a lot of work on the part of state parks people to achieve that certification. And it's a, a measure of the existing resource that we have in central Oregon, namely dark skies at night, which, you know, attract visitors. And, uh, you know, there's an opportunity, business-wise, for even more such, uh, you know, beneficial tourism to this area, although maybe we have too many tourists already, but nevertheless, it's a resource that has kind of gone unnoticed to this point.
Thank you very much. I was going to say, uh, yeah, so dark skies, but, uh, remember the, um, the eclipse of the sun, how many tourists were here? Oh, boy. The eclipse event a couple of years ago. Uh, thank you very much for that testimony. Uh, so this is a Planning Commission recommendation, and, uh, yeah, you're definitely providing support for that effort.
And I was, I was super impressed by how much, uh, written public testimony was, was submitted, uh, in support of this idea, been the CDD work plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So we don't have any other raised hands in our Zoom meeting at this point in time. I guess we could have given them 10 more minutes, maybe. Um, Mr. Kowalik, thank you very much for joining us. At this time, are there any phone numbers out there that we don't recognize? Okay. I guess that was our public testimony for the day. Thank you very much. At least we did have that one, and this is a topic that we've gotten some emails on and has been part of this process in the past. So with that, at this time, I'll close the public hearing on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so if, the next steps would be for the board, if you would like to consider, um, deliberating and, uh, adopting the Planning Commission's recommendations today, or if you would like for us to schedule a subsequent meeting. Uh, you did receive some additional, uh, comments this morning, as I mentioned at the start, from Core, Central Oregon Association of Realtors, uh, Jack Goddard, and, uh, we provided the comments from Visit Central Oregon.
And there's a new email from Nunzigold, so I do think. I just saw that.
Thank you, I have not seen that.
So I do believe that we have to leave it open in order to get those into our record, unless they thought they had a deadline.
Well, uh, we could acknowledge, yeah, I mean, we could put anything into a record. I mean, this is, uh, not a legislative or appealed matter, this is just getting information. So I would acknowledge, uh, you know, any, uh, emails coming in. We can put on the record for this, uh, for today. I don't know, we want to leave a period of time open. We could, but as I say, I mean, if we get an email from somebody on any topic, we can read it anyways.
Yeah.
Uh, so would, would you support deliberating, finalizing this at a different time or aiming for today?
Well, just next Wednesday, just to be sure that we have, because if they did come in this morning, I.
Yep, that's fine.
I think that would be appropriate. You know, public testimony, um, transparency, it's a good idea.
So, uh, one thought is, is there a, uh, a resource choice here during this process that you would like the board to provide? As in, you know, kind of accepting the next few projects in, or are we kind of balanced out with the resources as presented in this document?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the Planning Commission is always very cognizant of that, and they ask the same question about the resources. And, uh, the way Peter and I generally describe it is, is we don't expect that we're going to be able to complete all the projects in the next fiscal year. It may be 18 months or even beyond that. Um, so we encourage the, the board and the Planning Commission to include the projects that you would like for us to, to initiate this year or beyond. And then as the work, uh, as we complete projects on the work plan, we revisit with the board and check in, and, and as we complete projects and, and capacity emerges, we ask, we check in with the board on which projects to initiate next. So, um, I would be less concerned about the capacity and more, uh, interested in the projects that you would like to, to see.
So kind of priority or enthusiasm on specific projects.
Exactly.
That's kind of our homework, our task at this point, so.
Yes, reviewing the campgrounds, manufactured home, and RV parks. Uh, I do believe that if we can put that up there, um, because, um, I believe Commissioner Chang and I have talked about if we could have an RV park for the homeless, um, where, you know, we know where they're at, it's, you know, we're going to have to do some things in order to monitor it, but really, we've got to, um, you know, China Hat, Jennifer Ridge, Antler, they're all, Hannel Road, they're all such serious issues right now in our county. We had over 350 calls, um, for 10 months, and the last couple of months aren't included, and it's only gotten worse at China Hat that went to 911. So the impact is just, it's unbelievable and, um, you know, it needs some definite, um, help, some direction from us, and it comes from you, I guess. So I would, I would greatly appreciate that.
Well, uh, so I do support bringing this back next Wednesday, just some clear thoughts, kind of priorities that what we're going to advocate for, kind of individually and as a group, uh, for priorities and, uh, understanding that resources will be always the limiting factor, just time and, and how many staff we have working on this.
Right. And, uh, I, I, if this is, you know, we are looking at a work plan for the fiscal year that starts July 1st, so I, I mean, we do have.
Yep.
Uh, we're not coming right up against the wire, um, so it seems like it's okay to, to take a little bit more time to allow, um, public testimony and a public comment in. Um, but, um, uh, but, you know, I, I would, I do want to ask, I, I want to turn that question back to you, Nick, to just say, you know, how, how important is it to have clarity through an adopted work plan, you know, sooner than later?
Well, thank you for the question. In, in prior years, we would, we would begin the work plan, uh, process with a work session with the board prior to the budget process, and then we would, we would return after the budget process with a public hearing. And this was our first year of just moving it up. So we have plenty of time, uh, prior to the new fiscal year, and even then, as I mentioned, there may be a lot of the projects we're currently working on that will certainly, um, consume our capacity for at least the first part. So ti- timing is not critical at this point. So we want the board to, to take the time that is necessary to consider the public input and, and then adopt the work plan, as you wish.
Great, thank you. Yeah, but I mean, based on, based on the public input that we've received thus far, I don't, I don't see major, major changes in the, in the work plan, but always good to, to give everyone a chance to, to provide their input.
Okay, so we'll bring this back next week, a little bit of deliberation and put in direction to the things that we're excited about seeing getting done.
Oh, can I just say one additional thing? I'm glad to see the hemp regulations is on this. Um, I know we're, I've been hearing from the community, and according to the Capital Press of last week, America had 500,000 acres of hemp in production in 19. We need 20,000. Um, the farmers around me, I believe, are going back to hay is what I'm hearing. So that's great news if you have to buy hay, because the price of that was going up. I know it's not a quick get-rich scheme, but it is hay, and people are running short. It's, um, I'm reading that. So, um, thank you for those regulations, if you're going to look at that, because, um, heard from a lot of people, and then I also spoke with Rob Bolvet yesterday from ALC. He's been working on this, and he said what's actually happening is because they're taking the, um, the CBD, and there's a very easy way to convert it to THC, which kids can clearly do, and people, not here, but in, um, Douglas, Jackson County and that community, those people are very, very frightened and, um, personally, you know, it's not a, it's not a pretty picture that's happening down there, and I definitely don't want that to happen in Deschutes County. So thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. So that's our, our last agenda item before lunch recess. I do have some notes I can share with the, uh, from the governor's discussion just now with the chairs of the commission around the state. Uh, so what I'll do is just go down my, my notes as provided. Uh, so this is on the topic of COVID-19 and vaccines, an update with a call with the governor just now. Uh, so the goal is one vaccine in arms at least with a statewide 70% rate by July 4th. So that's one of the big statements that we started off. So that's still, the, the momentum is, is towards more vaccines still by July 4th. The equity plan that's being discussed is part of our, uh, application for next week to get down to a, a low level of, uh, community, uh, whatever the term is. Uh, the idea is to be, equity to be helpful. If you need resources, let us know. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, just an effort. It's an effort that we want to focus on statewide, making sure that, uh, you know, anybody and everybody, uh, have opportunities and are being offered the vaccine. 70% still is not the end goal, it's a mid-range of vaccines. Uh, switching to, there was a discussion here about, uh, you know, your, your medic, your personal medical provider is really going to be a different mode for some people, which will help get the vaccines up.
So what is the, if they're not saying 70%, then where, what are they saying?
Uh, 70 is not the end goal, it's a mid-range, up to 80%. Uh, it would be a goal. So, I mean, that was just mentioned in passing.
We, and we, we talked about that with, with Nahad and, and Molly on the call, on the, during the, the update, that they, they, they said 65% is good, but.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not where we ultimately need to be.
There is another, uh, contract, uh, that, uh, for dollars that will be available to us. Uh, it'll come through a new contract with Department of Administrative Services, uh, and these are to be spent on distributing vaccines. So $100,000 floor for all counties plus, uh, um, you know, more per population, so I'm sure we'll qualify for quite a bit more than that. But this is truly to be spent on vaccine efforts, uh, distribution, full-on outreach, whatever we want to do. It was mentioned that, uh, um, you know, go ahead and, and do outreach in any way that's possible, uh, you know, uh, offering a pizza party or whatever was mentioned. So that kind of effort for, uh, just welcoming people in that are ready for a vaccine. There was questions, uh, you know, from commissioners, um, uh, there was a, yeah, I don't know, there's some conversation back and forth between commissioners, nothing real substantive for, for news, I guess. Vaccine, uh, supply will go up. Uh, there's, uh, at the national level, they're trying to load balance, so, uh, Clackamas County mentioned that they're looking for more vaccines right now, and, uh, it was mentioned that the supplies are steady, and you put the word out and we'll get you more if, if needed. So that just happens to be Clackamas was the one that was mentioned.
Well, they're at 65%.
When it was mentioned that they, they still have, uh, the limit of vaccines is, is not gone there is what was mentioned.
And it's interesting, because Baker County showed at 41%. They actually, I confirmed it with one of the commissioners, they had 1,100 doses sent to them, and only 62 were used. And that was, that was in the bulletin, and I thought, is that true? So I did call and confirm, because, yeah, they aren't even sure if they're really at 41%.
Done.
It just seems like at this point, like, somewhere along the way, I mean, it was just weeks ago, we flipped from, you know, supply being the constraint to now it's, it's demand being the constraint and.
Right.
Yep. Uh, Johnson, Johnson shots were mentioned, so that's a one, one-and-done shot. A lot of people might like that. Uh, there's no allocation this week, but they will pick up, uh, and there are some shots in the state. So that was just a Johnson and Johnson discussion. Uh, and then here is the discussion about, uh, you know, home, home, meeting at home, bringing it to somebody's house. There's a FEMA mobile van in, in Multnomah, Washington Counties that's actively out there right now. They're moving it around, uh, phone calling, door knocking, one-on-one calls from, uh, from providers for the vaccines. So they're, they're, that's what they're thinking about, and use some of these dollars that's going to come out also.
Uh, when, when I was at the, the clinic on Friday, uh, getting my second dose, I talked to one of the administrators who said, you know, he'd be happy to, to, um, load up his bicycle.
Yeah.
With, you know, with all his gear and go door-to-door.
Well, and that's, that's it. I mean, there's going to be dollars for something like that, and if there's something that resonates, or if there's just a, and it'll be slower volume, obviously, in the mass vaccine clinic. And if there's something that resonates or if there's just a, and it'll be slower volume, obviously, in the mass vaccine clinic. But if there's things to start and just go do methodically, this is the time for that.
Then of course, there's the refrigeration issue.
So it was also mentioned July 4th. And then I asked about the end of July, what about a county fair? And basically the, the thumbs up was given that, yeah, by the end of July, we're gonna be moving past a lot of this. So.
Did they write that down and sign it and?
Well, it was not signed, but I brought it up, I asked and everybody was there. So, you know, and then Commissioner Judge Crawford out of Crook said, well, what about a couple of weeks earlier for the roundup? And the governor said, yeah, by July 4th, you, you could really start, after July 4th, you can start to, you know, think, think bigger.
Well, the COVID pandemic is in June. So, and I know they're, they're planning on.
Okay, yeah, so a week before.
Yeah, they're planning on putting it on.
But yeah, with protocols in place, most things can happen now. So, and think bigger. So I mean, that was, as I say, the conversation, but that kind of gives us a little bit of guidance about our, our county fair that we shouldn't think of it as a, you know, we just gotta figure out what version of it we can have.
Yeah, I, I, it, from, from watching the governor's press precedent yesterday, I, I wasn't 100% clear on what kind of restrictions would lift and which ones would be in place, continue to be in place. But it, it seemed like generally the idea was capacity restrictions go away. But we still might want to ask people to wear masks. So I, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe we can plan for 100% capacity fair. But, you know, whether, whether we were asking people to wear masks if they, you know, go inside an enclosed sort of space or not, I, you know, I.
Well, there's a huge discussion about that because, yeah, I mean, the, the rodeo is an outdoor arena and, you know, there could be family units with a little bit of space. An indoor concert at, you know, however many we put in there, 10,000 or 8,000 or some number. I don't know that that's gonna happen, but there could sure could be some outdoor music.
They were talking about doing some outdoor, but again, we've got weather issues.
So there's a huge discussion.
They had 73,000 at Cowboy Stadium for a boxing match. And Texas and Florida's numbers are not, not doing what Oregon numbers are doing. So, you know, why do we now have the worst numbers in the nation? Or I guess they're going down, but definitely Deschutes County, our numbers have been, you know, more at the top of the state. And yet you look at our vaccination, you go, why?
Well, and this is all in light of, you know, what we heard today, you know, the highest ICU count. And, and we are talking about, what, nine in the ICU and six on ventilators. I mean, that, you know, that's what we're balancing it with.
Well, get your therapeutics folks.
Okay. Well, so that was, yeah, that was the discussion just now with the, with the governor.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, let me see. So the only other item I would just bring up, just so we don't, and not at the end of the day, there was the Historical Society Board Meeting last night too. So remember, there's a good group out there. There's an effort by the, the Ben Bulletin right now to put a 50-year pictorial history book together by the end of the year. So this would be, instead of farewell bend, it's hello bend, which is the fun concept. There's a website for it, I don't have that now. But they're looking for community members, anybody that might have pictures from 1950 to 2000. So think about that. 2000 is a point of history now. You know, that just seems like yesterday, but that was 20 years ago. So, but that was an effort that was discussed in partnership with Historical Society and any community member that might have photos of that area. And anything in the landscapes or the downtown corridor or people in a memorable place was, was mentioned last night at the Historical Board Meeting. And we did have that wonderful meeting with City of Redmond last night. That was good that we had that discussion, the homeless efforts going on. And, you know, there is quite a crowd, a crew, you know, professionals and great services. Deschutes County provides and all the other agencies out there also. Okay, well, with that, we will recess for lunch to be, coming back together at 1 o'clock for the Bendelx presentation.
That should be fun.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Please join us at one of the tables. And welcome back to our afternoon session, the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, May 12th, 2021. Item number 12, presentation Belks, Bendelx, who put them together there, Bendelx presentation. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. So pretty basic, I'll start off. Hello, my name's Kelsey Herco. I am one of the operating owners for the Bendelx Baseball Club. I run the team with my husband, who's our general manager, Michael. You can see him in the picture. And then if you ever come around, you'll definitely see our kid Hunter, who's the little one in there, because he comes to work with us every day. We.
You make him work?
We try to. He's not very useful yet. I can see that he's very good at making a mess. We, my family purchased the Bendelx from the old owners in October of 2014. And then we've been running it ever since then. So the first main question people often ask us is just who are the Bendelx? So a lot of people are confused about that because we're actually a college summer league baseball team. So instead of being connected to the Mariners or the Oakland A's or anything of that sort, we're just get college players who come from around the country. They play for us with wood bats from June through August. And then pro scouts will come look at them. And it's basically, it gives scouts an idea of what they would play like if they got picked up and put in the minors. Because we're basically a minor team, just without that affiliation. And we are going into our 22nd year of operation, although the 21st year kind of doesn't count from last year. So a little bit about our impact into the community. The community of baseball, our impact is just in the 2019 season alone. That was the last season where there was the full rosters. We had 43 alumni playing in professional baseball. Nine of those were in Major League. Some of them are Eric Sogard, Blaine Hardy, Nikki Lopez, Seth Brown, who's just down from Clamath County, so almost a local. And then obviously, our most famous alumni from this area is Jacoby Ellsbury, who's from Madras originally. We also had 34 minor league alumni who are actively playing in the 2019 year. So a pretty good impact of people who come here and then our players truly go on and reach their goals of playing professionally, which is our overall goal, which is wonderful. We also typically have about 75 staff members every summer. A good portion of those are school district employees. So we get a lot of people who work for the school districts in the school year and they come and work for us in the summertime, which we love because it kind of overlaps well for them. And the like perk for us is they usually know every kid in the, and every kid in every family. So we're able to create a great, like feeling of family atmosphere because you recognize the people who are behind our counters and things of that sort. They also help because they know all the kids who are not 21, who try to buy a beer.
You're only a junior.
Yeah, I know you, you didn't graduate. We also employ a lot of first-time workers. So a lot of 14 and 15-year-olds that other businesses might not want to hire, we'll hire them on. They get the glorious job of picking up garbage, but at least it's a first-time job. In our 2019 season, we sold over 36,000 tickets. We have almost 500 season tickets and over 80 group events. So whether that's family reunions, business parties, things of that sort at our ballpark. That's in about 31 games a year. And just for reference, our tickets start at $7. So we try and be the affordable family fun in central Oregon. Because things can get quite expensive pretty quickly with big groups. So for this year, as we're looking at bringing COVID-conscious games to central Oregon, we've got a lot of steps that we're doing in order to really keep it as safe as possible. Obviously, the first one is just social distancing and face coverings. So we will have, all of our rows and seats are gonna be blocked off to allow social distancing between groups. We also are requiring all of our staff, players, coaches, fans to be wearing some sort of face covering, unless they are seated and actively eating and drinking. That's in accordance with the current laws that OHA has. What that means for us this year is our typical capacity is 3,500. And at the current high-risk level, we have 525 people allowed in our stadium. To kind of get as many as we could, we blocked the field off so there'll be no interaction between players and fans or staff. So the players don't count towards that 525, but our staff do. If we can get down to moderate, we'll be at 875. And if we get to low, then we'll be allowed 1,750. That's assuming we could fit them all. Due to the social distancing, we wouldn't be able to fit that many. But it at least allows us that possibility, especially if some flexibility comes with social distancing rules based off of the last press conference from Governor Brown.
Also, a little update, and we talked about it, I talked to the governor just a couple hours ago about the big picture. Really, the goal is to get to that low, low setting here pretty soon. It may be by the end of next week possibly. So that'll give you guidance about, you know, thinking about your numbers and how to start the season. Also getting from 65 to 70% of vaccines in the community by July 4th. And that's another point where we could even have other regulations go away. So, yeah, you may be able to really, you know, think bigger as of July and August, which is pretty exciting.
And that's definitely what we're thinking. We know that starting at the front, we probably won't be allowed to have too many fans. But we're hoping that come 4th of July or such, we'll be able to really open up and invite the whole community back, which is our goal.
And I, one, one other thing along those lines. I, I was hearing that, that the Trail Blazers were considering like premium seating for people who could show their vaccination card. I would think that, you know, if you had a section where everyone was vaccinated, you could pack them in a little bit closer together. So I'm, I'm wondering if you have explored anything like that or are interested in exploring anything like that. It, it seems like the kind of thing that it would be really appropriate for local elected officials to, to, to advocate to the governor to kind of look at those kinds of plans, you know, to allow, to allow more, you know, more seating if people who are vaccinated, you know, could, could demonstrate that and, and you could pack those people in a little bit closer together.
Oh, definitely. And that's something that we would really love to be able to do. A lot of teams have proven that it really works. I know we're not the same level as like the Dodgers, but the Dodgers have that exact system set up where they've got vaccinated sections. So according to California rules, they still have to wear face masks, but they can, you know, basically be shoulder to shoulder sitting in that section. And that really allows them to have so many more fans come, as well as allowing you to bring a bigger group. Because right now, our group sizes are limited as well. We're in, the Bendelx are with a group mainly of top-level people from every sports organization, including the Blazers. And about a couple of weeks ago, we did ask the OHA if we could do something of that sort because California and Washington allows it. But at the time, OHA said they were not going to allow that. So yes, we would definitely love if they reconsidered that. Maybe that might be one of the things they're considering is they kind of reevaluate some of the restrictions right now with the vaccinations increasing. Because it obviously seems to be working for other states. We would love to be able to apply that here and turn one of our seating sections into a vaccinated area and be able to, that would solve so many problems for ourselves.
Up your numbers a little bit too, yeah.
Because yeah, that would be the goal, is having something like that, because that would make a huge difference.
Great. Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. So some of our other safety measures for this year is that we're doing contactless ordering and payment. So really encouraging and limiting where we will accept cash, so not all of our concession stands will accept it. We also have a new online ordering system. You can't order from it yet because we're not serving food. But it will allow for people to completely order every menu item online and either have it delivered straight to their seat or just be sent a text message when it's ready for contactless pickup. We hope to do the delivery, but we are not unique that we are facing a bit of a staffing crunch. And so we might not have enough staff to facilitate delivery. It might just be pickup only, but at least this way you don't have to wait in line, you can watch the game to get your food.
I know, I was thinking those 14-year-olds are gonna be in demand everywhere because everyone is so short-staffed. Yes.
I know. I think it's like gonna be the best year ever to be a 14-year-old looking for a job because they're gonna start accepting everyone for anything that's allowed. So it'll be interesting to see. Another thing is just obviously sanitizing stations. So we've got hand sanitizer, hand washing stations throughout the ballpark, at the entrances, every checkout window, as well as obviously the same thing for our players on the field and umpires. They've got sanitizing stations throughout there as well. Another, to go with the sanitizing stations, is that we will have hourly sanitizing of bathrooms and any high contact, like so the railings going up and down bleachers, that sort of thing. So we're really definitely focusing on providing the safest possible ballpark experience, while keeping it as true to our normal routine as possible. Part of our requirements for having to be able to play is that we have submitted our safety plan to the state and we're just waiting to hear back from them. We should hear back before the end of the week. And assuming that they approve it, then we'll be all good to go. So here's the fun part. So it's central Oregon's impact on us, especially for this 2021 year. So every year, this is a huge impact for us, but particularly this year, is that we are in need of host families. So since our players are college players, they don't typically have a lot of money to rent a place to stay. So we try and provide host families for every single player. So if anyone has a spare room and wants to take in a player for a summer, we are pretty much in desperate need at this point. A lot of people naturally are really hesitant to take 18 to 21-year-olds in that they have never met before. And we obviously understand that. We are, for our host family's safety, the players themselves are not required to get vaccinated, but we are strongly, strongly encouraging it. And to be honest, every player that we've heard back from since telling them that has said that their schools and their school teams are already making them. So we don't have a single player so far that's let us know that they are either not vaccinated or are not along the path already. So a lot of them have the first shot, but not the second shot. So that's really encouraging to know that our team will be safe and host families will be safe as well. So if anyone who's listening wants to learn more about host families, you can go to our website, bendelx.com. Underneath the team dropdown is where you can get all the information as well as signing up. Another thing is we're looking for staff members. Again, not so unique. The, I think biggest unique thing for us is that we will gladly accept any 14 or 15-year-old that might have problems finding jobs elsewhere. We tend to have a 16-plus only working in our concessions. That's due to some restrictions, like they can't work a fryer or be in some of the hot things. But anyone who's 14 and older, if you're looking for a job or something fun to do, it's definitely part-time work. But we love to create a community within our staff members. And we've got lots of full families, parents and kids that work for us and cousins, things of that sort. And staff members that stick around for a very long time. Our concession manager has been here for 21 of our 22 years of operation. So we'd like to get people in and keep them happy and stick them with us.
Maybe your son will have to step up.
What was that?
I said, maybe your son will have to step up.
I know, I know. We're gonna have him running the music for the games. He really likes computers, but.
Keep him away from the fryer for now.
Yes, yeah. So that's pretty much all I've got to say. I didn't know if you guys would have any other kind of questions or really, we just appreciate the chance to kind of have another way to get out and talk to our community about who we are and that we're back this year.
And that's the message, we're back. You know, the, the whole community is going through a real quiet year last year and the weather's getting nice for the second summer, so, since COVID came on. So yeah, we really just need to work together, step through this in a, in a, in a, you know, a careful fashion, whatever that looks like, and just move forward at this time. So, and yeah, some wonderful nights out there at the ballpark for sure.
Definitely.
I, I, I'd be curious, I, I want to ask and you can, you don't have to unpack the whole story for me. But, you know, I, I'm just curious about, you know, the, the impact of COVID restrictions on your last year's season. I mean, was it?
Yeah, I mean, last year, we completely shut down, our whole league did. That, the fact that our league shut down kind of was a big deciding factor for us that if we have no other teams to play, there's no point in even trying. So it's definitely obviously significant. The majority, we're lucky compared to other teams in our league. We also have an indoor training facility located at the stadium. So we've got batting cages that are open to the community. So we can do that year-round. And, you know, we've been kind of off and on with that based off of the restriction on gyms. But it has at least allowed some income flow. And last year, we were still able to have something at our field. We had a lot, a lot of great high school level games with Boss Baseball, who's a local. We had a lot, a lot of great high school-level games with Boss Baseball, who's a local organization here, and so we were able to have a lot of great high school games at the field and give kind of those kids, you know, a really unique experience of playing on the field under the lights that they might not normally get, because our field's in use so much more. So we did something still, but it was definitely a very different year. And obviously, like, again, we're not unique, and it had quite the financial impact, just as, you know, that's where most of our finances come from, is these, we have ten weeks in every summer, and that's where it all comes from, and it didn't happen one year, so...
And you were carrying all those facility costs.
Yeah, yes, exactly, yeah. Unfortunately, all of the, the stadium still sticks around, and it's a wonderful stadium, we love it, but it is quite old, and so with that comes, it always needs some tender, loving care, and so that was another part that came into play, especially this year. But we were able to make some great improvements to the stadium this last offseason by being closed. Some of them, we just met yesterday with the Central Oregon, Oregonian Coalition for Access, and we did a lot of ADA upgrades and repairs, and so we're really excited to be able to share that with the community this year that we weren't able to last year.
Well, thanks for hosting us in 2016, so you were, yeah, so that was the centennial of the county, and I was able to go out and do a ceremonial first pitch, and just about threw it over the catcher's head, so I wasn't dialed in real well. But, so we've been out there, and, you know, maybe we could do that as a crew here sometime this summer, also bring our family and friends. So it'll be really interesting to see how, how the numbers evolve and what participation can be, look like this summer.
Yeah, definitely. Well, thank you guys so much for having me out here. My contact information is on this last slide, as well as kind of being out in the community. So feel free, if you ever have any other questions, give me a call, send us a...
I see there's a hat. I didn't notice that until...
Yeah, yeah, we brought a hat for each of you guys, so...
Thank you so much.
That was very kind of you, by the way.
It's under the budget a lot.
There we go, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I would love, this idea of the, of like, the vaccination premium seating, with shoulder to shoulder, I would love to explore that some more and see what we can do, or what I can do to help make that happen.
Yeah, that would be, I think, such a huge difference for us, just because it's proven to be safe and working in other states, and so we're not quite sure what OHA sees as not being safe about it. We'd love to hear more, we just haven't had the opportunity to hear from them, what specifically their concerns are. But it would make a huge difference, because that social distancing is really what limits our ballpark.
Yeah.
Just the way that it's set up, because it wasn't set up for a pandemic.
Yeah, no, and it matters for many other outdoor events that are happening in the region, you know, from concerts to rodeo to other things, so...
Yeah, any outdoor seating event would, it would be life or death for some of them, that you could allow so many, I mean, quite literally double the capacity if you were vaccinated, so it would be interesting to see if that could be a possibility.
Well, and it's an idea, I'm not real excited about it, because it's kind of a contentious concept, too. So, I mean, just make sure this is a community conversation about that, but...
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta be careful, yeah.
Making it so it's people's choice.
Yep.
A very important thing, is that it's everyone's choice to be vaccinated or not vaccinated.
Right, right. I mean, I would never advocate for people not to be able to go to an event if they're not vaccinated, but, you know, if you offer them an incentive, you know, like, cool seats, you get to be closer to your people, that hopefully would, would help, help with the vaccine motivation a little bit.
Definitely. And it's interesting, and I know specifically in Washington there, because we've got a lot of teams in Washington that we work closely with that are in our league, and for their vaccinated sections, it's either vaccinated or proof of having a negative test within the last seventy-two hours. So even, you know, if you, for whatever reason, got tested, then you could come to a game and be able to bring twenty people with you to have a birthday party or something of that sort, would make it so that just having that as an option allows people to go back. Have I told that, so?
Yes, I would tell that, you know, sometimes they listen to what's happening in Washington and in California, so...
We did.
I would let them know that, you know, makes sense. Okay, seventy-two hours test, why not?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we tried to tell them, but I think it's just a little bit of, I'm sure they're overloaded with suggestions. And so I think, especially from our, our teams are not quite as significant as, like, the Blazers or the Timbers or Thorns, groups like that, that have a little bit more sway.
Well, you're very important in Central Oregon.
Yes.
You're important to our community.
Yeah.
And we are, and it is an outside event, so, you know, I think it's really good to let them know that.
Yeah.
And I bet some people would actually get the test just so they could go and have the experience.
Yeah, especially to allow large groups again, because I think that's the part that, you know, as we open up more, people are still just really restricted, where you couldn't have, like, a big birthday party or things of that sort. And being able to, if you had a test, you could meet up with all your friends and go do something together. It seems like it would be a great way for people to still be safe, still be cautious, and still be able to go back to living life.
Definitely.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Item number thirteen, consideration of board approval to apply for a prevention program grant. Jessica Jacks, welcome.
Hello, thank you, Commissioners. Jessica Jacks, Deschutes County Health Services Supervisor of the Prevention Team, and I am joined by my colleagues Lauren Wood and Sarah Worthington, who will help address any questions that I can't, that you might have. So we actually have two grants that we are requesting permission to submit. The first one is a St. Charles Health System Foundation Grant. It's focused on alcohol misuse prevention, per their community prioritization process. It is a grant in the amount of just over five thousand dollars, and that particular grant was due on May first, and we were not able to get in front of you before then. So we are, of course, contingent upon your approval whether we receive, receive that fund if we are awarded. It, in particular, will help us pay for two high school student interns. We have a youth-driven committee called the Teen Community Health Advocates, and they have been really instrumental in helping us move some work forward around substance misuse prevention, and it fits within our philosophical approach to engage the young people that we are seeking to, that we think about, and apply our, our work toward that we engage them in that process. So we're really excited to have this opportunity. We have had high school student interns in the past. We currently have two, and would love to maintain that opportunity. So they, the, the two paid positions would help in facilitating those community meetings, perhaps presenting to community groups, and a variety of other really helpful activities. But the, I think, so that one is pretty, pretty small and succinct. Are there any questions about that?
Question?
Jessica, I was curious whether you have, have any data, like, basically, how do you understand the impacts of this programming? Like, whether you have any data that, that, you know, compares, you know, past rates of substance misuse in the area to, you know, like, before and after the program, or whether you're looking at models from other places? But kind of how do you, how do you choose this kind of programmatic approach and know that it's, it's going to be effective?
Sure. Lauren, I might tag team with you to speak to the more nuanced question of evaluating the student intern work, but I would also just add, Commissioner, that one of the ways that we monitor patterns in our youth population is through a state-delivered survey that occurs almost every year, and it's, it's asked questions and helps us gauge behaviors around substance use, mental health, physical health, how comfortable and safe students feel on that school, and, you know, topics such as bullying and so forth. So we use that as a rate and monitor trends. But your, your question specifically around how do we ensure that bringing a youth forward to do this work, are we measuring their work? I'll pass that on to Lauren, to...
Certainly. So I appreciate the question, Commissioner. We, as part of our Teen Community Health Advocates Youth Committee, that was mentioned, this, these youth internships help lead that committee, and we do do a committee self-assessment annually with our youth members to ask them, you know, both ways that we can improve our youth engagement in working with them, how we can further our recruitment of engaging additional youth in those efforts. And then we also have incorporated some other metrics, such as whether involvement with our youth committee is part of a protective factor, something that we recognize, that youth involvement with after-school initiatives, with out-of-school curricular activities, is part of a behavior that supports not using substances. So that is one of the questions that we pulled into our larger youth committee assessment. But beyond that, I will say that our work around creating a sustainable youth committee that directly engages young people in the work of, you know, targeting our prevention efforts to their peers is also recognized by our Drug-Free Communities Grant at the federal level as a best practice, and is something that we report on through our typical twice-a-year grant reporting requirements as well. So those are just a couple examples of how we kind of drill down to that specific level of our youth committee and make sure that we're continually improving and meeting the needs of the young people in our community.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you want to do these separately, or, so these are both going to be applications, looking for approval for applications?
Sure, I can, I can start the next one if you'd like, if that's what you'd like to refer.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, sure. The next grant is one issued by the Central Oregon Independent Practice Association, so you might have heard the acronym COIPA. It is titled...
So we just, just learned about that this morning. We did sign a letter of support for the Pine Community Health Center for an application of the same fund for computer upgrades and enhancements for their organization. But it did take us a moment in learning about Living Well, Central Oregon, and COIPA. Or, no, I guess, yeah, Central Oregon Health Quality Line, sorry, reading the wrong terms there, but just letting you know, we did talk about that this morning.
That's great, great. Sounds like there's some competition out there.
Yep.
So we have put forward a concept that will help us with our Living Well, Central Oregon program. That is a regional program that the Deschutes County staff, on behalf of a joint agreement between the two counties. And Living Well is a program that offers workshops for individuals who might be living with a chronic condition, such as chronic pain or diabetes, that really gives them skills and knowledge to manage that particular chronic condition more effectively. And so we are continuing this program, but what we'd like to do in this particular grant is ensure that we are reaching our Latino population and our rural areas more efficiently. So we've added some concepts that will help us afford childcare, that will increase our workshop leaders, those that we've trained actually from, actually being from the rural area or bilingual, bi-cultural, to be able to lead the workshop. So this, this particular grant is one I would call as a kind of capacity building. It's really going to be focused on helping us bring up to, be, kind of increase the bench, so to speak, of persons that we have available to deliver workshops across the region. And so we will only, we're only going to be offering two workshops during this grant period, but it will allow us to continue working with those new leaders beyond the grant cycle. So it's due May fourteenth. We're asking around the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, and I am happy to take any questions, along with Sarah Worthington here.
I like the idea of being able to expand that capacity. So Living Well with, you know, chronic disease efforts in Deschutes County, we do have a long history of offering these services, and hopefully they're very valuable for the people to get involved. Looks like no questions, so these are both just applications for these grants at this time. Thank you very much for the thorough explanation.
So we need a motion that one has already actually been applied for, and it will just make it legitimate if you do get it, so then we can approve it at that time I'm taking. The, so I would, board approval of both prevention program grants, the one for, what was it? Fifty, fifty-one seventy, five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, and then the other grant application is for thirty-five thousand. So hopefully, we'll get the, both of them and be a step further ahead.
So are we making separate motions, or?
Just together.
I made it together.
I'll second.
Here we go. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair vote yes. So thank you very much for the information today, and go get them.
When will you know about the thirty-five thousand? When will the decision be made about the thirty-five thousand? Do you know?
Which question, Sarah? Do you know the answers to that?
I know that the grants are beginning July first, so I, I believe it's in the month of June. I don't know the exact date.
Okay, well, I just wondered if they let you know quite right away, so that's pretty soon.
Yeah, yes, we hope to be back to get your approval to receive them very soon.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, consideration of signature document for IGA with Oregon Health Authority. This is Kara Cronin. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners. For your consideration today, oh, sorry, I'm Kara Cronin, Health Services Program Manager. And for your consideration today is this agreement between Health Services and our vocational rehab department, where we provide specialized supportive employment supports to a small group of their clients, and they pay us for that. So that is what this agreement is about. Do you have questions for me?
Is this kind of mid, mid-budget cycle for the state, or is this the expected time for these to come in, or do you know the big picture there?
I know that this contract was lapsed for a little while, so I think the timeframes on it are a little wonky. This, we are not going to receive three hundred thousand dollars in compensation, as we are invoicing for each of these, like, milestone events that we have, so it's likely going to be under ten thousand dollars per year that this actually brings in.
And then, do we have outstanding invoices, or is this being honored now?
It is being honored now, but it's been a very slow year in COVID for this, so there are no outstanding invoices.
So it's just, yeah, putting this agreement in place for future invoicing up to this amount?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare is looking through the...
Well, I was looking, so it was dated April first, and this is about vocational training and actually funding for it. And I would hope that this is something that we could do more than just ten thousand dollars worth, because we are so short of, you know, help wanted signs everywhere. We definitely, if people have the ability, I think it's, it sounds like something really worthwhile. I know one of my neighbors worked part-time at the Albertans', and it was so wonderful to see her there, and I know it was extremely... And I, I know it was extremely rewarding for her at the same time. So let's hope we could bill more than $10,000.
Yeah, thank you.
So if there are no other comments, I want to make a motion for Chair Signature of Document Number 2021-295, the IGA with the Oregon Health Authority.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So at this time, item number 15, consideration of document amending IGA with Oregon Health Authority. And this looks like it's for COVID items. We have Nahad Sadrizodi on this, but are you ready for this, Dan?
I think I'm actually going to come in at the end of this. I think it's probably going to be Nahad and Cheryl for a little bit.
The Commissioners, sorry to interrupt. They may not be aware that you're ready for them. They thought it was to let me run next door because they're both here.
Good, you're watching out for them, okay.
I'll be right back.
Don't run too fast, Janice.
We'll knock on his door.
Fifty-first.
I'll send you a text.
Just rolling through them.
Well.
Okay, we are, we're ahead of schedule here. You got a partner looking out for you there.
What a privilege to come back twice, Commissioners, in one day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devon, I hope your meeting went well at 10:30 and you found some encouraging news?
Yeah, so I mentioned it at, yeah, this morning session. I think Whitney already communicated there's dollars going to be coming through for, you know, these equity efforts and the plan from the state. There's a $100,000 minimum plus, you know, relative to population. So we'll see what the number looks like. So there's some other resources coming from the state. And since we spoke this morning, it looks like you may be invited to our eight o'clock legislative, which I think you're there already, sometimes already. And that may be where we talk about an equity proposal to the state. So just a couple of items that may be happening.
Thank you Commissioner for sharing some of the key highlights from that meeting.
So at this time, we are, we are looking at this document with IGA with Oregon Health Authority.
Okay. Well, I am joined by my colleague Cheryl Smallman, who is our business officer. I'm sure she's well-known to everyone. And for the record, my name is Nahad Sadrizodi, Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. Can I get started Commissioner?
Yes.
So we are here to request the board's kind approval and signature for, of OHA Agreement 159809-22. This agreement provides additional funding for program elements 01-09, that's COVID-19 active monitoring. 01-10, that's OIP cares. And 44-01, school-based health center-based grant. The school-based health center funding is $34,000 carrying forward funding from fiscal year 2020, which will be distributed to medical sponsors. The other $76,000 is the grant awarded to our cousins at Behavioral Health for SBHC outreach engagement approved by the board in March of 2021. The other funding program elements I mentioned are to support COVID monitoring, response, and recovery efforts. Most of the COVID-related funds are valid until fiscal year '23 and some until fiscal year '24. Now, as you probably know, there are guidelines around the use of these funds and the proposed allocation is intended to address the acute COVID-related needs of the community during the coming months. The suggested allocation also addresses the anticipated needs during the recovery phase. And please don't ask me when the recovery phase starts as my guess is good as anyone else's. But I think will be our main priority though during the recovery phase, which presumably can be around two years, is really around addressing the sub-crisis within the current crisis. So for example, when I say sub-crisis, I'm referring to the drop in immunization rates that we are observing, the drop in STD diagnosis, the increase in alcohol and cannabis sales, mental health of our women, youth, and communities, drop in referral for early interventions for kiddos with developmental delays, which obviously contributes to delay in learning, drop in child abuse reports, drop in checkup and general visits and reproductive health procedures, including child well visits, and on and on. So these are some of the sub-crisis that I'm referring to. As part of the recovery phase Commissioners, we intend to repurpose our existing limited-duration staff, people like Laura Hart, Ashley Jones, Chris Heinecke, and others, not only to address the sub-crisis, but address them within equity and inclusion lens and ensure that we are engaging with our marginalized communities in meaningful ways to understand the barriers they're facing, their health priorities, and empower them to be part of the solutions. To that end Commissioners, we are requesting for your kind consideration to use these funds to cover six already-approved positions during the emergency phase. And I have, my educated guess is that that would be until the end of this year, so December of 2021. And 14, including a new position to extend during the recovery phase, which I anticipate to be between two to three years. The proposed new position that I just mentioned is a community health specialist with an equity and inclusion focus. And I just also want to mention that the staff numbers that I mentioned really encompass the whole gamut of skillsets and qualifications. They include staff in admin services, community health specialists, public health educators, nurses, supervisors, ops, such as an incident commander, health communications, health officer. So it's, it's a broad range of skillsets to address a complex recovery phase as well as an emergency or more acute period. So if you allow me Commissioner, I'm going to give the floor to my colleague Cheryl to provide more details.
Oh, Nahad, there's one issue that you didn't include. You know, as far as the child abuse, all the things that have been happening since COVID happened, all the unintended consequences. And I read that up to 750,000 cases of cancer have probably been missed because people have not been going to their doctors. So anyway, you did seem to cover, you know, all the other issues that are happening outside of COVID. But that one, I think it's very important not to ignore at this moment in time.
Absolutely, it's amongst, thank you Commissioner. Rightfully, you mentioned it's amongst the top three killers. And, and you're right, I think I should have been more articulate in that part of what I said was we are seeing a drop in checkup and general visits, which obviously speaks to screening, cancer screening as well. So thank you for being more explicit on that.
I just thought it was incredibly impactful. I, you know, what you said was definitely true, but yes. We're not going to know how bad it is. Because this is going to go on for years and years because of our kids and what is the damage that has been done to the children of this country and the children of Oregon that haven't been going to school. And, you know, yeah, the long-term effects of this, I, you know, it's frightening.
Thank you, yes, indeed. So Cheryl, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Nahad. For the record, Cheryl Smallman, Business Officer for Health Services. As Nahad had mentioned, these work funds will be used to support capacity in the department in order to continue the pandemic response. The funds will cover 20 positions, 11 of which are limited duration and we're asking to extend those positions. Two of them through fiscal year '22, eight of them through fiscal year '23, and one through fiscal year '24. I'd like to make just a verbal note that there's an error. One FTE is erroneously omitted in the staff agenda. We have corrected that in Resolution 2021-2028. It's a health services supervisor position that's currently slated to end at December 31st of 2021. And we're asking for that to be extended through fiscal year '22 and that will be supported with these funds as well. It's the logistics officer. So in addition, as Nahad had mentioned, to those limited-duration positions that we're asking to extend, we are asking for one community health specialist, three from June 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Now, the department is doing its best to estimate what is needed, how much is needed, when it's needed, and then aligning it to the various funds that are coming through to the department as well as the county. So for instance, we are estimating a phased reduction in contact tracers and investigators probably through the end of fiscal year '23, which alone would nearly exhaust this particular funding stream. So the funds in this particular agreement, the OHA Agreement Number 159809-22, it's part of a broader strategy that leverages several funding sources, including FEMA funds through, or through September '21, will pay for vaccine distribution efforts. As noted in prior board meetings, we've got Central Oregon Health Council funding, which will go to support community-focused various supports, including wraparound services, communications, translation interpretation, nurse overtime, et cetera, as well as the American Rescue Plan funds. And we have a request to support the contact tracers and investigators through those funds. And we're anticipating about $2.35 million for that specific need. So for your kind consideration when the time comes. So with that, myself and Nahad are available to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question about contact tracers. I happen to have not been contacted and I, so I was very curious if you are contacting someone that has a positive test and then it is their responsibility to let all their friends know that they have a positive test? And, or do you send them an email? I mean, what are people doing? Because I found it quite unusual that I wasn't contacted and I was told, well, we have HIPAA laws. And so I'm just wondering exactly, what do the contact tracers do? When they call, like, let's say I had a positive. They would call me up and what would they say to me? I'm just wondering. Do, do you know Cheryl or would Nahad have to answer that question?
I think Cheryl is asking me to respond, Commissioner. So Commissioner, the, the, part of the response and part of the interventions from our contact tracers and inventions and investigators really depends on what surge modality we're in. So if we are in a very acute phase with increasing number of cases where we are at extreme high or high risk, there is a protocol for that, which really focuses the attention of the existing staff on high-risk places and people, such as long-term care facilities, schools. And we prioritize accordingly and we really go through some of the key questions for us to make sure that we are addressing the acute needs. And that's the phase and modality we are functioning under currently. Under an alternative modality, which we're not under, in the functioning under surge situation, our investigators and contact tracers basically reach out or attempt to reach out to every single person and go through the entire interview question and then ask for their close contacts defined by 15 minutes of continuous exposure and less than six feet and then reach out to those contacts as well in order to follow up. There is a role as well for the employers, based on OSHA guidelines, to play in informing their employees of potentially those who have been affected by a case. Our contact tracers and investigators, and I can vouch for them, do their best with the parameters and limitations that they face. One of those limitations was, is the HIPAA rules and guidelines that they have to adhere to and follow strictly, otherwise there are legal implications. So that's, that's just a very quick overview of that. And I can also say on a personal level that I have been in situations in my office where I have later found out about a situation and I have felt, I have felt scared and I have felt a little bit, a bit uncomfortable. And, and it's something that I share sentiments of other community members if they've been in those situations as well.
But first of all, then, you're saying really HIPAA laws have number one precedence here. So we're talking HIPAA says, no, you can't say anything, this is health-related. And then we do have OSHA down below for employers. But HIPAA is the number one rule for all contact tracers and what they do?
Absolutely, yes Commissioner. And we make sure that we train them so that they follow those guidelines, those laws. And, and it's sometimes frustrating frankly, but it is the law. It's, I think it was passed in the 90s, it was bipartisan support and it's one that we have to follow.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my head around the contact tracing in case investigation capacity that we're talking about maintaining. We want to be, I, I, I think we want to be prepared for, you know, heaven forbid, but, you know, we want to be prepared for fifth wave or sixth wave or, or whatever in the next couple of years. But I also, there's definitely a part of me that, that hopes that we aren't going to see a whole lot of COVID cases in, you know, after kind of this fourth wave ramps down. And, and so I'm wondering what, what plans you have for these positions if there aren't a whole lot of cases to investigate? So, you know, best, you know, like, like are we, are we planning for worst-case scenario? And if so, do we have thoughts on other duties we can assign to people if we actually get a best-case scenario?
Yeah. Commissioner, we certainly share those views that you just expressed. And accordingly, the staffing model we have in place for contact tracing and investigation specifically is around temporary staff and contractors who are with us according to the needs or the demands at the moment. So they are hired through employment agencies. And if there is work for them, they do the work. And if there is not work for them, then they are not getting paid to do anything.
Okay, interesting. So, so we're kind of, we're talking about authorizing like a, you know, authorizing a certain level of capacity, which we, we won't have to use if, you know, if, if we don't have a substantial number of cases?
Yes, the, the request in front of you today is, does not cover contact tracing.
The, the request in front of you today is, does not cover contact tracing. The request coming before you as part of the American Rescue Plan funds, or ARP funds in the coming weeks, will include the temporary staffing costs associated with that particular function as it relates to COVID-19.
So, this is all the stuff that we can do because we're taking care of contact tracing capacity through ARP? Got it?
Precisely. Yep.
If you approve it.
If we, contact tracing be done with these dollars, too, from the state, or are they saying explicitly no, kind of in their, in their proposed agreement?
Those are allowable uses as part of this fund, these, these funds.
So, then you're saying that you want this $2.3 million?
We are estimating through fiscal year 2020 with a phased approach. So, right now, the estimate is the current contact tracing capacity through the end of September of 100%, followed that next quarter at 75%, then January through March of next year, so 2022, would be 25%, and then at that capacity through the end of fiscal year 23. And that cost would be $2.35 million. The funds that we have in front of us today total $2.9 million. 2.3 of that could be used through the end of fiscal year 23, but we would not be able to support the 20 positions that are currently being utilized in various other capacities to help put that in, in place.
Just for the record, Commissioners, you have not made any decisions yet on ARP funds. That comes at a later time, so this isn't, what's before you today isn't contingent on any future ARPA decision.
But according to the third page, this department is requesting $2.35 million through the contact tracing.
At a later time.
Exactly. But it, but it's not being paid for anywhere else. We're going to have to pick it up there, and really, are we going to need $2.3 million for contact tracing? When you've got HIPAA laws saying you really can't tell anybody anything?
Well, the good, the good news is, as Cheryl and Nahad were describing, that contact tracing capacity that we'll consider later, like, we authorize sort of a, we authorize a certain amount of capacity, and depending on how much COVID there is, they may or may not have to use it. In which case, I guess we would have a chance to reallocate that ARP money, hopefully before December 2024.
So, there's interesting dependency here. By making this commitment here, there's going to be a strong need for the contact tracing, which is kind of making that second choice upfront, instead of kind of looking at them together and understanding this. You know, there's a mention of a list of items that could be done, referred to as subcrisis. I think there's a way to flip that around and say, you know, focus on best practices and advocate for, you know, you know, good health choices in our community. So, kind of flipping over, just the terminology is what I'm referring to there, kind of the same, same goals. Yeah, I may be interested in studying this a little bit more and just kind of the dependencies of it.
I think so, too. This is, okay, we're talking about $3 million that we're supposed to approve, and yet you're saying that we really aren't going to take those other monies out? Yeah. It just seems a little, because it's saying COVID active monitoring and the implications, the 2.339, and yet, you know, then they're saying, well, no, we need more money over here.
So, Mike, I'd love to sit down with somebody really explaining, you know, this is Oregon Health Authority, couple line items with some funds, but then what's expected by those line items, or what's authorized, what's possible with those line items, and then how we're fitting it into our budget, as I say, and then the observation is that there's an expectation that there's future funding also, which may all fit together well. I'd just like to study it a little bit more.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that
Yeah. We're happy to do that, and just to make you aware of the timeline that OHA has given us, is we are required to provide them a budget of these funds by May 31st.
Oh, good, we have a week or two.
Yeah. I think one of the key things to try to understand here, and I, I don't have a full understanding of it just yet, but is, is, you know, we've talked about the need for contact tracing and, you know, the ability to make those funds contingent later on out of ARP, but, you know, looking at this program of work and these dollars, the key question is, you know, you know, are these core, key, essential health services that we want to provide? And, and so, maybe if we, if we do spend some more time looking at that, at this, that's kind of what we could try to tease out more clearly is, you know, what are the services being proposed for, for this block of funds? And, you know, are those, again, the key, you know, priority health services that, that we see?
So, you support kind of looking at it a little more?
I, I, yeah, I'd be, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, you know, I, I, I mostly get it.
Yeah, good.
I'm not saying that I 100% get it yet, but
Yeah, let's take some time, look at this. So, then this, the next item, that item three we pulled from the consent agenda was the, kind of the fix of this, or, you know, there's one edit. So, it sounds like both of these items will be packaged up for future discussion by each Commissioner, by whoever can share it with us for, yeah, I mean, and we can get a decision here in the next couple of weeks.
You have two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. I know, because it's this one number that says contact active monitoring, that's 2.3 million, but then we've got this 2.35 million. Is that, is that on top? You know, it's, yeah, I need, I need to have somebody really talk to me about this. Because I'm thinking HIPAA laws and contact tracing, it could be really simple, you tell them, hey, let all your friends know, and if you need to, send them a hard copy letter, but I, I can't really see with HIPAA what else you really can do. That's the guiding principle of life.
This is also setting up that two-year horizon of, you know, hopefully winding down of a crisis, but we're not quite sure yet either. So, yeah, let's take a look at this.
Yeah, and, and, you know, as was mentioned, there's also a huge amount of essentially, you know, deferred health services that are involved in this package that, you know, people have not gotten full access to because of COVID last year and a bit, so we want to make sure that, we want to make sure that our community is getting those services. We're doing, we're doing some catch-up.
Well, so, yeah, Nahad and Cheryl, we've got a little work to do on this. Thank you. You've heard the Commissioners kind of digest what we're doing here, and let's just aim for a future agenda item in the next few weeks on this, but also have some sit-downs. So, that'll be item number 15 and number three, as I say.
Thank you.
Okay.
Cheryl DeBon.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So, this item number 16 is discretionary grant program review for the fourth quarter. So, this is the last quarter of a fiscal year discretionary grants. Laura, from her, from her desk upstairs.
That's right. Hi, Commissioners.
Hello.
For the record, Laura Scundrick, Administrative Analyst. Each quarter, the Board of Commissioners will review applications submitted to the Duchesnes County Discretionary Grant Program and makes awards accordingly. Today, the Board will consider requests made for activities to take place beginning on or about the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2021. Your materials today do reflect each of your balance actuals. However, during the Board's allocation of video lottery funds on April 7th, you did set aside an additional $20,000 for potential additional funding if it's needed during this quarter. So, just so you're aware, this quarter, we did receive a total of about $50,000 in requests. So, that additional funding could certainly be used if that is the will of the Board And I have included it on our tracking spreadsheet for today, which I am happy to pull up, and would just look for Board direction on how you would like it distributed. I'm happy to distribute it evenly among Commissioners and fundraising, or we can keep it a separate pot, if you'd like, however you'd like to move forward, we can, we can do that.
So, we're talking about fundraising at this time, the last two items you're saying?
There was $20,000 allocated for video lottery funds that we could either distribute among the three of you evenly, or among the four categories, if you'd like. It's, however, the Board would like to see that.
So, I started working from my, from backwards up here. One of the choices we might be able to do is take the amount of $3,380, divide it by two, and give it to Bethlehem and Latina Community Association, and support both of those fundraising efforts in about that $1,600, $1,700 range, or round them up to $2,000 each.
Laura, could you do me one huge favor before you go on? Could you add up that column again, the request column?
So, in the, the general requests
The general requests, yes.
That's about $46,000.
That's what I thought, because it says 49, and I added it three times, and I'm going, yeah, 46. Oh, boy. Okay. I was like going, is my little calculator off again?
Again, uh-oh.
No, I know, it's never off, because it only costs $15. That's why it's so good. But, okay, all right, well, that helps a little bit, because I was, because accordingly, we only had $12,840 between the three of us, and that was kind of minimal. So, you're saying we have another $20,000 that we could add up and split?
That's right.
So, do we do that, guys?
I would support bringing at least some of that $20,000 over.
And I do, too.
There's a lot of good projects in here.
What's to say, I'm, so, I was starting from the bottom there, and if, so, if we have, we think of it as a $1,000 pool, look at the two fundraising items, and, you know, figure out if we want to
So, we only have $3,380, so you're saying to make those two whole, which we'd need 7,500, so we'd split that and put it into there first?
I was thinking offer on both $2,000.
Okay.
Which would be $4,000, which means we're just taking a little bit from that other 20, because this is going to be an exercise in who are we going to fund today?
Exactly.
You can see it already.
And we don't have enough, so $2,000 each?
Is a proposal, yeah.
Sure.
I would support that.
Okay. So, that helps us reduce some of the variables, Laura.
It does. So, let's see here.
So, that's $620 we need out of the $20,000.
There we go. So, we're at $19,380.
Okay.
There you go. Yep, okay.
So, that's good.
So, we can either leave that in its column just by itself, if you'd like to start going through the organizations, or we can distribute that among the three of you.
So, another high-level thought is, I'm, let's see, I'm basically supportive of everything on here, so, you know, and then now it is truly, from my point of view, an exercise in what can we fund and how fully can we fund it. Everything's, you know, just kind of the right thing at the right time, great efforts here. One of the things that jumps out is the high school specifically, La Pine High School, there's truly the education foundation out there, and if, and we've been in this spot before, where if we, if we support a high school or a school effort of any sort, there's, every teacher is going to want to fill out an application and come to us. So, we might not want to, you know, start that process and think that
Commissioner
And I, and I know, I know
No, it's, it's kids. These kids are impacted for the rest of their life. I mean, I talked to Superintendent McIntosh, who's retired now, and he said 10 years. No, what I'm reading now is it's going to be the rest of their life. I don't have any problem at all giving them 100% the $2,000. It's actually, if you work out the numbers, we have enough funding now for 70% of that, that $46,000. But, you know, kids.
I, I'm definitely supportive of, of, you know, of projects for youth, particularly projects like this, but I, I do, you know, I had a similar question of, you know, is this the appropriate place to be, to be providing financial support out of, or are there other places? I, I mean, I'm under the impression that there has been a lot of focus within, you know, at the state level on career and technical education, so it just makes me wonder whether there isn't some, some funds or resources somewhere else to support this, but
As I say, it's arts and crafts programs, it's, you know, shop, it's any, any of these programs, and, oh, I am passionate about it, too. I know Mr. Salvatelli at La Pine High School, and I am a supporter of his. It's just, it's a misfit of these dollars because of, you know, there could be $2,000 grants to every classroom in, in Central Oregon, and it wouldn't be enough. I mean, that, that's the prob, that's the only dynamic problem.
Well, of course, let's talk about the real problem. The problem is that we build schools for $114 million instead of making the school year the right length to match the other 49 states. I mean, truly, do our kids need to be at little mini college campuses, or do they need to have a decent school year so that when they graduate, they come out? And this was pre-COVID.
Yeah, I mean, for that, we'd have to backtrack to the point where they made the decision to go for a capital construction bond versus an operating levy, and
Right.
And the school district didn't make that choice. They, they put the, they put those, that set of capital projects in front of the voters, and the voters supported it, so.
I mean, it, I really, I just, I don't have any problem at all. I love vocational programs. I took home ec once. That was a really delightful one. Like, what was I doing in home ec? But I did it once.
There are a few other projects that I did have questions about, and I, I completely, I, I spaced at the moment when I could have asked our prevention guru, Jessica Chex, about this Clear Alliance project, which, yeah, I opened up my binder, and I was going to ask her about it, and then I, I missed my chance. But, you know, that there, there is, you know, in that case, there are a lot of different prevention efforts in our community related to substance abuse, and so I, you know, I would, I would have, it would have been great to hear from our prevention expert, you know, what she knows about this program and its, and its effectiveness.
I've been working with Mandy Puckett for quite a few years now. I find her, I find them leading in the state. They have an amazing team. They do a lot of in-class education, like, in different schools, in different counties, actually. They're based out of Redmond, and their work is outstanding, listening to rabo-vet. I wasn't aware that there's now this simple procedure, you know, to change the, what is it, the CBD to THC, and the kids are doing those kind of things. So, you know, as parents, you've really, you've got to be really well-informed, and in the classroom, she does some outstanding things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would have just asked the same kind of question I asked Jessica about, about the proposal that she had, you know, can you show me the data on, you know, the effectiveness of this approach?
So, we want to start working our way down, we can maybe make some choices.
We should just go through them individually.
So, Band of Brothers, La Pine Chapter, $3,000 was, was, was authorized a year ago, and then it didn't happen, is my understanding. This is the wall that heals, correct? So, that may be easily to be able to put an additional Q4 funding column.
It didn't, it didn't happen? They didn't get their money from
Uh, no, oh, yeah, so, yeah, money did not flow last year because the wall, nothing happened in 2020, but the dollar, the wall is scheduled this year, and this is, this is a commitment that was made a year ago, or more.
And the tour was delayed due to COVID is why that didn't happen.
Okay, so they never got the money, so why is
Just still in our budget, so, I mean, as I say
Right. Right, we should just say, yes, we already approved it. It's approved again. You know, if they haven't gotten the funding, the money should have been sitting there somewhere if it hadn't gone out with a check. So it still should be in the balance, carry forward.
Yes, it was just rolled over into the new year. That's correct.
Okay, so we should be okay.
Yeah, so, so you're saying just fund it and not even discuss it today and not even think of it as any of these dollars?
Well, yeah, it's not, it shouldn't be these dollars. It was already.
You were whittling it down.
Well, I mean, it was already approved.
No, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would support that to take 3,000 right out of the $19,380 and.
Oh, she's saying take it out of the reserves.
No, it should have been in the carry forward balance because it was already allocated. They had not written the check yet, but it was allocated. So that, those funds should have been restricted. And then we've heard this in the past from different groups who didn't get to do things. And, you know, so we approved it. We didn't write the check. Right. But if this, we hadn't given them money, so.
Well, is that, so Laura, is that, is that $3,000 kind of in suspended animation somewhere? Or did it get rolled into some other bucket?
Well, since the $3,000 was carried forward into the new year, it would have been included as the beginning networking capital for this year, which would have been allocated for things like this program. So it kind of got wrapped back up into fundings that were allocated.
And this is, so this is just accounting, you know, we can either, and we can justify it either way. This is truly very discretionary choice of the Board of Commissioners. So either we take it out of the 19 or we allocate it back to even the rolling fund balance from last year.
I know they lost.
That's what you're showing.
Yeah, that's what they, they lost. I had $1,718 that was supposed to be a carry forward from a couple of years ago. It didn't show up. And I'm like, I, I went like, I knew my money and I went like, where's my, you know, they found it.
So just.
No, we're dealing in millions of dollars here. We're talking thousands.
I support the concept that this is an approved item to be taken out of other funds and not even discussed today.
Great, I think that sounds perfect.
Okay, and we, yeah, we do have that continued to be built into the fund, so that works great.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one would be Campfire, which they are requesting $1,506 for their Summer Kids Junior Counselor Internship Program, which is a career readiness program, and they give teens practical work experience. And the funds would support training materials, staff time, things like snacks. And there's about 12 participants in the program.
So I'm, I'm going to support these by a third for a while, and then I'll be out of money. I'm just letting you know. So that'll be a choice of how are we going to backfill this? I support $502.
How about you?
I'll, I'll match that.
Yeah, let's make sure it's 100%. Just split it.
Great. All right, the next up would be the Central Oregon Film Office, which promotes the region to out-of-area media production companies. They are requesting $2,500 to help their efforts of promoting Central Oregon as a filming location to successful location managers out of LA. So they would, the funds would cover their flights in October of this year.
I think this is a wonderful economic development project. You know, I'm recalling when, when Sandy Henderson came and gave her presentation to us and the economic impact of the, you know, film site attracting work that they do. I, I can't, what I couldn't remember was whether there is a way that, that either at the state level or at some other level, Central Oregon Film Office is getting support to do this work. And I, I could, I, you know, with more time, I could have gone back and dug, dug through my files and, and looked at the notes that I took. But I'm just wondering if any of you recall kind of how, you know, what, where does the, the funding for Central Oregon Film Office come from? Because I know there, there is state level money to bring, you know, to bring film, you know, film projects here. But I don't, I can't remember whether these guys actually have access to that or not.
Commissioner Chang, for this specific project, I'll just note that they are, they were currently applying for a Visit Bend Cultural Tourism Fund grant to do this project. So it sounds like that would be majority of the funding for this.
Right, okay.
And there'd be a good discussion, even with Sandy Henderson herself, about the history of this and the big picture. And I don't know that information offhand. I do know this has been an ongoing effort for, you know, a few years now, and there has been some successes. And there may be a time where Central Oregon really resonates for some of these production companies. So, yeah, I mean, being prudent with my dollars, I'll put 500 in there. And maybe it's going to be supported other ways here, too.
Right. Said this is for five return flights.
Yeah, this is truly an investment in a specific project for the film office.
If they could pre-buy the tickets right now, they could get some smoking deals.
Right.
Well, she might do it tomorrow if she gets notified of this.
Yeah, the ticket round trip is, actually was 500, so, or less.
I, I would put 500 towards this as well.
Okay, I'll do that, too, Laura.
All right. Thank you. So next up is Central Oregon Locovore, which is the fiscal sponsor for this Bend Pollinator Pathway Program. They are requesting $2,500. And I apologize, it was, I misread the application, and it's not 29, it's $2,500. This program connects native pollinator habitats throughout Bend. So the funding would provide locally grown native plants to Bend residents for planting and implementing pollinator-friendly practices. This money would acquire about 415 to 490 plants. And I will note that we, we requested feedback from County Forester Ed Keith on this. And he mentioned the language in their blanket pledge where they ask recipients to refrain from the use of pesticides, herbicides, and chemical fertilizers. He pointed out that sometimes these are necessary tools, especially for control of noxious weeds. So they could potentially call out specific insecticides rather than using that blanket language.
So Ed was suggesting we give them that feedback? Or, or he, he gave that as a concern about the project?
That's right. Just kind of noted that that was kind of a concern to him. But it's the, you know, the will of the board, whether you'd like me, I'm happy to go back and talk to them about that feedback if you'd like.
Well, I support that. I mean, that's a professional opinion, not trying to push a button too hard there. But, yeah, with, with a hard, you know, statement saying they're not going to allow anything, that'd be maybe too aggressive. I mean, I'm just, yeah, sharing. First time I had heard about it, so I'm just understanding that. And I can see the amount requested, the handwriting, sure. Didn't make it clear if that was a five or a nine. Well, I'm in the $500 category today just because of the resources and this.
And you added your $6,460 from the split of the $1,380.
My thought process is I'm kind of, we'll go back through and pepper it with other resources if, if that's how we're going to end up doing it.
All right.
So, well, that's a choice. Do we want to take that 19 number and divide it by the three or?
Well, that's what I did because I, you know, we've been going this 500 thing. So I just want to know where I'm at.
Yep. Well, put me down for 500. And as I say, I may be able to do more at some point.
I, I would, I would allocate 500 as well and, and be interested in potentially plusing that up if, depending on how the, the $19,380 shakes out later. I, I, I think, you know, we, we all, I, I'm guessing we all read the news and, you know, are aware of the, the collapse of, of pollinator insect populations or, you know, across the nation. And so anything that we can do to curb that and turn it around so that those pollinators are there for, you know, for plants out in the, in, you know, in the wild landscape and on farms, I think is a great project.
Thank you. And were those amounts, was that dependent on the language, the change in the language? Would you like me to?
They're not going to change their language. This is what, you know what, they want to be purists, I get it. I don't like pesticides, but sometimes, you know, when you have noxious weeds, you have to use them. So they're not changing their language. You know, if we give them 1,500, that's 1,500. So I'm happy to do 500, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't feel like we have to ask them to change their language.
They're not changing their language.
So I support notifying them of that concept at least.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Okay, not a requirement, but.
Got it.
In informing them of Ed's concerns.
Sure. Great, okay. So next up is the Central Oregon Public Safety Chaplaincy. They provide chaplain services to law enforcement, emergency services personnel, and their families in Central Oregon. They are requesting $10,000 to help provide critical incident stress management trainings to their chaplains.
And I really support this. And I, as I say, I don't have a whole lot of money to allocate or the way we're going to do this. What about taking that as a bigger chunk out of that last line item and the amount of about $6,000? I'm sure they can do some great work with six grand.
So you're taking six out, so that would be two from me, then?
I mean, yeah, so as I say, we're looking at it differently. But, yeah, additional Q4 funding, if we put 6,000 in that line, it'll.
I know that Joel Stutzman, the, the work they do is really close to, you know, people's heart. And it's, it's really overwhelming at times. It's been.
Well, and it can ground people that, yeah, can really have a, you know, some traumatic events that happen, and it really brings people back instead of going down a long road of suffering. So, I mean, I really support that.
I would, I would love to, you know, I'm Mr. Data. I would love to, to know, have a sense of, you know, how, how many people they've, they've reached in, you know, last year or the year before.
And they'd love to come in, probably, and tell us, too. So there may be an opportunity.
Yeah.
We've had them here.
They were working with the families of the three girls and sisters that went into the tree. If you can imagine, to walk away from that and not have nightmares forever. And they, we've had a lot of attempted suicides, a lot of suicides. They, they are dealing with things out there. Last year, remember, we had more suicide deaths in Deschutes County than we had COVID deaths. They're, it's, it's a really lonely job, and it takes a very special person that is compassionate and, and still can survive with compassion.
And along those lines, I mean, yeah, if you, if you, we want to either have them come in to talk or want to sit down with them or see a report of some sort.
Yeah. You know, I, I'm definitely, you know, like, I'm, I can, I'm certainly persuaded that this is, this model or this approach could have really significant positive impacts. I, I kind of, I would like to, I just would like to see a little bit of kind of track record, I guess. But I, I, I mean, I would, I would at minimum be, be comfortable putting, you know, allocating 1,000 to this right now, so.
So as I say, there is a, so either we think of it as $2,000 each or, I mean, would you propose bringing it down by $1,000? I mean, we could think of it as however we want.
I'll do the three out of my nine.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Adair.
We're going to be in trouble here if we're talking two different accounting systems.
I've got my own little system here going. Yeah, I would love to leave it at six. They're asking for 10, that's only 60% of what they were asking, so.
Commissioner Adair was proposing, she allocated three, Commissioner DeBonne said two, and I, I said one.
Okay, there you go. Yeah.
And if, you know.
Which is that same six number.
If we could give them that, that little piece of feedback, you know, you know, show us, show us some of your, 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 your track record, your history. I, like, I, I would be, I could be persuaded to bump up or, you know, know that for the next cycle or something like that.
Okay.
Great, I'm happy to reach out to them.
So now the accounting system that Laura has just shows us using the three columns, and it's just going to go negative here for a while, but it's, we'll get there.
All right, so next up is Clear Alliance. They are requesting $3,000 to adopt several of their educational materials and advertising. One of those is their tobacco, marijuana, and e-cigarettes course, which would turn, be turned into an animated video. And the Did You Know? educational media ads would also be created in Spanish. Commissioner Chang, I know you mentioned you had some questions. I will just note that we did reach out to Jessica Jax just in general about the organization. And she stated that Health Services is aware of the work that Clear Alliance is doing, but is not involved in direct partnership of development in their curriculum.
Okay. She didn't have a sense of the impact of? So, and she didn't have a sense of the impact of their work?
You know, I didn't ask that specifically, but I'm happy to. She would be a good resource for that.
We actually funded them 7,900 last year, 7918 to be exact. So I know they do outstanding work. I know they do a lot of work in Redmond, and they're really appreciated by the community. And I, you know, and they work in other counties, too. So they're not just, their work reaches, you know, significant areas. I know they've gone down to Lake County.
So, I mean, I would do $500, which, so they have a couple of $1,500 projects that they're referring to in here, which.
So if you do, you'll do 500, so.
I, I would do that as well.
All right.
So I'll do 1,000.
Okay. 1,000, thank you. Next up is Destination Rehab. They are requesting $2,500 for the Empower Cycling Program this summer, where they would provide specialized support for the Oregon Adaptive Sports Summer Cycling Program with onsite physical therapists able to support those unable to fully participate in the program due to physical limitations.
500 is my magic number right now to start with. As I say, I'm going to possibly go back and support something else a little more, but.
I, I would, I would start at 500 right now as well.
I'm going to skip that one because I have to make sure that I have some of that 20,000, $19,380. So I don't want to go in the hole anymore.
Should we?
Good, there you go.
Should we ask Laura to spread that 19,380 across our three pots?
So now it's, as long as it says negative 6,000 something, that's where we're at. Is the way I'm seeing it.
Okay, just don't go, don't go past negative 6,000.
I'm happy to change those totals if that's easier.
Psychologically, it would be.
That's fine, yeah, I mean, if you can do that easy enough, I wasn't worried about asking for it.
There we go.
Oh, look at that. See, I'm, I have already spent all kinds of money. Okay, well, so next item.
Oh, good, it matches. That's what I had.
That's what you got, good.
Okay, I feel better now.
All right, so next up would be, oop, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just looking at the next item. So Friends of the Children's. Oh, sorry. I was just looking at the next item. So Friends of the Children is next.
Yes. So they are requesting $2,500 for their youth summertime activities. They pair a paid professional mentor with youth who are facing obstacles in their life. This summer, they will have 48 youth engaged in activities such as hiking, biking, rock climbing, high desert museum, lots of fun stuff, that these funds would help cover a portion of staff time, transportation, equipment.
I'll do 1,000.
Could I ask a question about this, this group? They, we floated Friends of the Children as a potential new service partner?
Right.
Are we, is that still in consideration or?
That's on the big spreadsheet for next fiscal year.
Right.
Yeah, what do we decide?
Because we reserved a certain amount of funds for, you know, kind of that new service partner type category. And I, just from what I know about the group, I would be supportive of bringing them on as a new service partner. But if we're doing that, then I might be a little hesitant about allocating funds in this discretionary grant cycle.
This is just for their summertime program, honestly. I'm sure their, you know, their school year program is totally different.
Commissioners, I will just add that I, based on your conversation on the Video Lottery allocations in April, I have put together a proposal for a potential new grant program based on that discussion. And I will be sending you that proposal just as a starting point for discussion for next fiscal year. Just a note.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, just tracking that discussion, I tracked that discussion through to some conversations with some of the entities that I had suggested as potential new service partners. And I do believe that when the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, the irrigation districts, the Deschutes River Conservancy, and the Central Oregon Cities Organization comes to speak to us in a week or two, that they are going to, you know, make a formal pitch for that. So, yeah, so I mean, if, you know, like in that case, if they were also putting in a discretionary grant, I would be a little hesitant to fund that and as well as, you know, be advocating for them to get a discretionary grant.
So...
That's it. I mean, this is...
Thoughts about this now for Friends of the Children for this grant? I can leave this blank for me at this time.
I think I would leave this blank for the moment. And, you know, again, I'm very interested in considering this group as a new service partner.
Okay, so then...
Next one.
Next, Heart of Oregon Corps.
Heart of Oregon is requesting $5,000 for their Central Oregon Youth Conservation Corps, where local youth complete natural resource projects like trail maintenance and fire fuels reduction. The U.S. Forest Service requires a 20% non-federal match, so these discretionary grant funds would go towards that match. And you can see that we have supported this program in the past. We did reach out to staff for feedback on this program. County Forester Ed Keith noted that Heart of Oregon is a contractor in our fuels reduction contractor pool, and they also help support solid waste during Fire Free.
I'm real supportive of this, these efforts, Heart of Oregon Corps. In fact, they're out there swinging hammers and supporting the Veterans Village with another program that they do.
Through Youth Belt.
Yeah. So, you know, $1,500 for me is a starting point.
I would start with 1,000 for this group.
So I'll do 500.
All right. Next up, we have Lapine Community Kitchen. They provide hot meals every weekday as well as prepackaged grocery boxes twice a week, and they also provide clothing and a shower truck. All of this is free of charge. So you can see we've provided them funds for this program in the past, and they have noted they continue to see an increase in demand due to COVID in the last year.
500 for me. Yeah, I like to get them something. Cash is always good flowing through their operation.
I'll do 500 also.
I'll do 750. Trying to conserve those dollars.
I know. Well, see, that's the thing, getting to the end of this.
Yeah.
So I'm supporting, yeah, not supporting the high school ask and for the reasons as discussed. And man, as I say, I know the kids. My son was in that school with that teacher and everything, but it's just disconnect from our dollars.
I'll do 500.
I'll do 500 as well.
You guys are going to make me look bad now in my own community.
The good news is, the details don't go to the recipients.
Well, but I mean, yeah, so that means that the majority of this board, though, is funding individual asks from a specific classroom. I mean, that's the only thing I'm holding on to is the fact that, oof, this doesn't scale well. That's all I'm saying.
It doesn't scale well that we have the shortest school year in the...
No, that's fine.
And I agree with you. I agree with you. It's just...
All right. So next up is the Sisters Folk Festival, who are requesting $2,000 for their summer creativity camps. This includes activities around music, art, creative writing, all for children who might otherwise be unsupervised over the summer months. They are implementing a new pay what you can afford structure, so that means no student will be turned away this summer.
500 for me.
I would, I would, I would support this at least 500. I would like to see them get the full 2,000, so I guess...
I'll do 500.
I'll do 1,000 then.
Okay, so we're at two. Whoa, somebody got their full money. Ask.
All right. So next is St. Vincent de Paul. They are requesting $2,500 to go toward the remodel of their food pantry, their social services lobby, and their exterior, which all will increase efficiency and safety in their office.
I'll support this by a third or $1,000. I guess that's a, that's a, ask to my fellow commissioners if it's a third.
Okay. So I can do 750?
How about putting me down for 750 as well?
And I'll do 1,000 then, yep.
Great. Next up is Stroke Awareness Oregon. They provide stroke awareness educational materials and presentations to businesses and service groups. They are requesting $2,500 to help produce a high-end professional stroke 101 video to replace their older slideshow. Due to COVID, they have transitioned to providing mostly virtual presentations, and they are finding that businesses would prefer a video that employees can watch on their own time rather than a set date and time. I did reach out to Health Services, and they were able to confirm that these efforts would not be duplicative of any services provided by Deschutes County.
Good.
I mean, with this one, I did, I did find myself asking, you know, doesn't this video exist? I mean, you know, stroke is a, is a big deal nationally. I, and I mean, if there are suitable, you know, suitable video presentations from other places, I hope that this group is taking full advantage of that. That's it. I mean, it's a very important cause, so.
I'll do $1,000 in situation maybe.
I would do 500.
Does it say 158 on mine?
Yes.
That's right.
Down to the wire.
Help fill us in.
You're going to have to write a check.
Yeah.
So I'll do the 500. So then where are we at?
So that leaves Commissioner Adair with $158 also, and then Commissioner Chang, $1,768.20.
Okay, I have a question on the next one, the shield. I honestly thought I allocated something for that group before. I know that Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Chang were apprehensive, but because it was veterans, and I don't see that it's listed on the grant program page.
You are right. I apologize. I did not include that on the spreadsheet, but you did, you did allocate.
Didn't I do like 500 or something, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So...
So this time I don't have to feel badly that I have no money left, but I have $158.
Well, and I mean, I'll just clarify, it wasn't apprehensive because of veterans. It was just learning about a new program.
Right. And so did you guys get enough information?
There wasn't, there wasn't enough depth. There wasn't, you know, I didn't, I didn't have the depth that I was hoping for with the last proposal, but this is much better.
So did they get the 500 from me, or that I donated before then, Laura?
No, we did hold on to that for this quarter, just in case there were more allocations. That way they would get it all at the same time.
Fabulous. Okay, so add my balance, then, the 158 for them.
Okay.
Add my balance also. Well, we might round it up somehow magically too, just something.
Yeah, and I could, I can, I could go back and plus up some of the other categories so that you all could redistribute down through here as well. I mean, I, can someone explain to me what happens with any funds that are left in your balance at the end of a cycle?
They get lost, and then you're going to say, you know, I know I had $158, and could you please find it? Because I had $1,718, which somehow disappeared, so.
This is a free person board that has full authority to move these monies in this little fund, because these are video lottery dollars for economic development and other purposes. We can do whatever we want. So, I mean, yeah.
Within reason.
Well, no, yeah, within the law. So, yeah, we're very flexible with this.
Well, I would, I would put at least 700. How about I start with 750, and then if my fellow commissioners wanted their amounts to be 500, like, I'm happy to take that out of whatever I've got left there, that we could get all the way through the list and not shortchange a group just because they're at the end of the list.
Well, see, yeah, so I'd appreciate that. I mean, so...
No, they're adding my 500 from before that they didn't get.
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's going to be plus. Mine's going to actually be, which really...
I can show that. I'm messy.
Yes.
So then I move this as a negative number this year. Is there support for that?
Of course. No problem.
Well, yeah, so put me down for 500.
Now, I look negative, so that's, we're going to have to have a journal entry on that, because that doesn't look good. I did not want to be, have a negative number. It's like I have another carry forward. So you should add the 500 on the top to the 9910, add $500 more to that, because I'd already allocated it, it already had come out of my balance.
So she can sleep at night.
Yes, sleep at night. Thank you, Laura. See?
Then, well, so then put me in for 500 at that, the shield, and you can leave my number negative. I, that doesn't bother me.
Tony sleeps at night, just wide.
Go ahead and take, go and take, go ahead and take whatever amount, $342, out of my amount and move it over there so that we can, we can all be square.
Okay.
And then... We fully funded Band of Brothers, correct, right off the top. And then, or is that accounted for, Laura, that the 3,000 right off the top for Band of Brothers? Or, yeah, because it's coming out of other funds. Okay.
It was a carry forward that wasn't showing up. We know it's there.
Yeah, I mean, as I say, I allocate away, Commissioner.
Going to take out here what was given to Commissioner DeBonne.
Please, yes.
There we go. So 676 left for Commissioner Chang.
You put another $100 each in, sorry, I'm going to start from the bottom end. Lapine Community Kitchen?
850.
Heart of Oregon?
1,100.
The Public Safety Chaplaincy?
1,100.
Locovore?
600.
The Central Oregon Film Office? That wasn't it?
Like a game show.
How about the remaining 176 in Friends of the Children? It is like a game show.
There we go.
Thank you.
Well, that's exciting. This is our fourth quarter allocation discretionary grant program. This does have quite a history at the Board of Commissioners. I remember 15 years ago hearing about this way before I was a commissioner and thinking, how do I get in there? So, you know, it's just these little dollars that can really make a nonprofit move forward, you know, just the programs or services that they're providing. So it's pretty exciting we were able to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just one more item. You'll see in the Updates tab on your binder. Citizens for Community had $500 remaining from their original grant, so they're now requesting to use that to support their website, which is sisterscommunity.org, and the county would be listed as a website sponsor. This website is a communication hub for sharing and connecting with Oregon, local organizations, businesses, resources, and services throughout Sisters country.
So the money's been allocated, they're going to repurpose it, correct?
That's right.
And I'm supportive of that.
If for no other reason than that, for them to give it back, it's probably $500 worth of administrative work.
Yeah, we don't want...
But, yeah, I'm fully supportive of that as well.
As long as we're listed as a website sponsor, why not?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Laura.
At this time, executive session, we have topics for today.
If you have time for a very brief litigation one, I don't know if Tom has anything else or additional items.
Well, look at that. We're just top of the hour at 3 o'clock. We're not doing too bad. So at this time, we will go to an executive session on litigation matter, ORS 1926602H for litigation.